They could use you all again, dude.
I know. Did you even eat your lunch finally?
Yeah.
Okay.
These are really hard to ignore.
Especially like it's one thing if it's like a jolly rain here, I can walk away from that.
Butter fingers? Butter fingers, they were butter fingers.
Long day. Woke up at four this morning and hadn't been able to go back to sleep.
All right, we're gonna start.
They did. Absolutely. They definitely enjoyed.
Yeah.
It was good seeing you there.
It was great.
Absolutely, really.
With their rendition of Crazy Train.
Oh, that's smart.
Great, I need another layer. I never know what I'm gonna hit down here.
Get ready? It's getting harder.
Okay. Our table's backwards. I guess it could be a little. We can't really sit in very close.
Did you have a good time snorkeling, uh, snorkeling, scuba diving? We're down, right? Was your holiday?
Yeah, actually, I'm in the house. But, uh, yeah. Just get away.
Okay, everybody? All right.
Yeah.
Nice to talk around. It's nice to have a story. Tom? Did you see Jose out there? No, I'll go looking. His door's closed or open? Okay, no, he'll be in a minute then. I'll have to chase her down in the bathroom.
Right. You can't do that.
No.
There are limits.
I don't know, it's not the contrast.
Do you match it?
Jose! What are you hearing?
Yeah, when you open the door at the mentor, it's total. I mean, you see everything.
Yeah, is it? I've never. I've walked by and they've opened. Oh, and I'm like, oh, cool. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, welcome. Welcome, everyone. It is July nineteenth, and this is a study session.
We're moving our table set up wrong, and the end is right here.
Oh, I see. Got it.
So it's kind of hard, sorry.
I know, we'll wait for roll call so you guys can get situated. No problem.
We were gonna, we were gonna Brandon Garrett, but it's kind of me.
You guys need help? Oh, yeah.
There we go. Now we're in here. See? Teamwork.
Perfect. Great. So we're gonna start our study session. It's about one seventeen. We're starting early today because we have a very full agenda. I'll start with it. We go around. Barbara Nosferi, mayor. Turn to my right.
Ken Baxter, city councillor. Jessica Beul, city councillor.
Olivia Bosman, city councillor.
Melissa, so mayor pro town.
And we also have the city manager here. And is there anyone else you wanted to bring to the table at different times? As well as the city attorney?
I'm good. They'll come in though when we get to the first time.
Perfect, great. So, um, welcome, and I will start with a personal statement. This is a land acknowledgement that represents my view, does not represent the view of council, or any individual council member other than myself. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Nju, Dene, Pueblo, Kobi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective, without recognition of those who came before us and who to this day continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect and acknowledging this legacy. So we will start. We have, I just want to go over the agenda so we're all clear. What we're gonna try to accomplish today. We'll start with any future new business topics that need to be, that we need to consider. We will have a lodger's tax discussion that the city attorney will help participate in, I believe. And then we'll have a discussion of boards and commissions. And then we'll move into discussion regarding a managed camp. If all goes well, we'll take a break at about two forty-five to two fifty-five. But if we are behind schedule, we will eliminate the break. So on that, who has some items for future new business?
I can bring one up, but maybe there was discussion about before, which is on the Durango TV channel. Was it ever something that was brought to council? Was it ever something that council discussed publicly, gave direction of? And if not, is it worthwhile to at least get an update in a public setting from staff on what they ended up doing?
I feel like we got, and we get an update from staff on what we were doing from Tom and like why? I don't think that when picture first started, DGA, that, and so we're just transitioning. I feel like we just got that. And it was very helpful for me, and I don't think it needs to be.
But it's, I know it's, we got the email, but did we have that in the public setting so our community knows what was done? And I think that's where I'm going.
So your question is, do we need to, do we need to do that in a more formalized manner? Or I guess what the, the other option would be is, does it make sense for, at some public manner, for staff to explain the rationale, rather than a discussion of revisiting it?
Maybe just a presentation of the city council. Because here's the livestream options, YouTube and the DGA website, or the the durango.gov.com or the website. And we don't do the cable and over the air anymore. Maybe that's all it takes, is a little presentation of the city council.
I would agree. I think it's a good point, and I think Tom's email was so helpful and informative. And sharing, just having that venue to share that, that information with the public would be helpful.
So do we have consensus that this would be just a part of a city update and something that the city manager would include in his updated?
I'll check with Tom.
He's right there.
I was just gonna say, I think we can, with the city operational date, if you're ready, we can just do it tomorrow, or tonight.
Uh, not right tonight.
Okay.
But I'm just not, my, yes, absolutely, update is fine.
Okay, great.
Maybe August meeting.
I would put it into your agenda so people, you get your agenda, know that you're gonna get an update on the Durango law.
Good idea.
Great, okay. Other ideas? I have one, but I wanted to go around.
Thank you.
I'll jump in with what people think. Mine is on the Welfare Watershed Protection Fund. We had our kind of monthly meeting and we had an update. And one of the things that came out of it was a suggestion, and Marcia actually kind of thought it would be happening, was that we can have an update for joint, the city and the county at this coming meeting. But because of all the other issues that we're looking at, it's not really realistic. And I'd like to propose that possibly with the cities, city managers, again, an update, that we hear from them, the things that have, that have been achieved, some of the things that are still outstanding. And I'd like to recognize that they will have a budget request. We funded them in the past, so that that would also be part of their presentation to us. So I was wondering if there's support to have that come to maybe the August meeting or the September meeting, present an update and talk about the financing for that fund.
Yeah, I'd like to know what you've accomplished.
I don't want to steal the thunder because there's some good things that I'd like you guys to hear about.
Yeah.
So, Jose, we could do that, that, when, you wanted to coordinate with Chuck with Shana LaBarca.
Okay.
And the manager, so that would be great. Other items for new business?
I have a quick one for me, but I am gonna sign a letter for Jennifer Jenkins for, and I sent you guys information and email on it. She had asked me to sign a letter of support, and when it's for an energy contract funding. And when she sent me the letter, it made me realize, ooh, I need to change this dramatically to make this for myself because I was gonna sign it as a person. But it also made me realize, maybe I'll bring it forward to see if there's council support for wanting to sign it as well. If there is council support for wanting to sign it as well, we'd leave the letter much as it is with the mayor signing it. So I'm bringing that forward. If you had time to look at it. It's from the, she, John Jenkins did suggest, she said renewable energies. And she said that there's gonna be a significant amount of funding coming down for renewable energies from the infrastructure bill. This one is for data research technology and around collection of data to understand what we have as far as renewables in our community. It's, this was a relatively small grant, but she said it's beginning, and it's from the US Department of Energy. So just following up again, if there's not council support and/or if you guys want more information, or you want to think about it longer, then I will just change the letter and sign it myself.
Is, do you think, is there a deadline that we need to?
Unfortunately, she needs it by tomorrow.
Okay, so.
Close of business day tomorrow.
So the other option would be, everyone has a chance to read it, send their feedback to Jose, and if there's consensus, then I can sign it.
If you guys want to do it that way, whatever, I wanted to bring that forward as an opportunity.
Pose some options.
Yeah, I didn't see enough, there wasn't, I wasn't clear on what they were going to accomplish and how it's going to benefit us and impact us. So at this point, I couldn't.
Okay, no problem. You don't want to sign it?
Then I'll just.
I would say you signed it only because I haven't seen it. Like, I mean, I haven't literally, like, I haven't.
I'll just sign it myself. I'll tell her.
All right.
Not saying it on board, it's like.
I will communicate, but we follow it up, that I will follow it up, but.
To reach that.
Yeah. I will tell.
Anything else? Right, great. So let us go into lodger's tax.
I just texted D. I was gonna invite D Y's right on C on. Ben, see on yet? You can join. We'll have some preliminaries here, so what an email available in case you had questions about some of the details. I think this is on for power, right? So. I texted him to have a little schedule. I told him one twenty-five. I guess we might start. Okay, thank you. So just as a quick recap, the council met at the prior study session. We had a discussion about lodger's tax issues, including the, specifically including the over collection of lodger's tax during 2021. Approximately $684,000 over the $900,000 estimate. Following that discussion, council directed staff to prepare some ballot questions. Again, no decisions were made, but the direction was to prepare some ballot questions. And also to prepare a plan B that would include refunds, which would allow council to review the option of a refund in lieu of an election, or is a option in case elections were conducted and it failed in November of this year. So I guess is, I'll turn it over to Jared to a quick run through the, just the financial issues. Because we may have some viewers today who have not seen this before, so I think it makes sense to recap that quickly. And then we'll kind of get into the discussion at all.
So this presentation is almost mirror image of your additions from the last presentation we had at the study session end of June with a few amendments. So again, just summary of lodger's tax collections for the year 2021. What that deferred revenue is sitting in a fund, waiting for a decision, either reelection or refund. The allocation, and in this, I did amend what that 2021 allocation was to try and blend what we spent. So actual expenditures that occurred from January through June of 2021 for these purposes, as well as the allocated value, right? So we're kind of looking at two things. One, expenditures on these, for these purposes, and revenues that were set aside earmarked for those purposes per the ballot question. So year to date for 2022, this is just something, we have another month of data. So we have updated where we're at with the apportionment. So if you will compare to the previous presentation, you'll see we collected $300,000, approximately $4. How that has been allocated for each of those purposes. And just for sake of arguments, at this point in the year, the the collections make up 29% of our annual collections. So we're watching those numbers as they continue to grow. So with that, we project out what we will see for the rest of the year, or what we would expect to see based on our histories. And we are projected to collect $4.2 million in lodger's tax for the year. You can see the breakdown by the 2% that we were collecting previously, and now we bring a quarter. And how those would be broken out with a subtraction for the, what we're projecting to be another paper overage in 2022. So as of now, based on the current month, we are projecting about $600,000 in an overage for the, for the 2022 year. Just to revisit what our allocation methodology, per the ballot question is, 55% goes to marketing, 20 to transit, 14 arts and culture, and 11 to the council determined portion. And you can see, I made the two small pie graphs to show. If we simply used the current allocation methodology, those are the values that each one of those purposes would receive out of the 2021 overage and the 2022 are projected over. Any questions?
So can I just suggest that I don't think if anyone's listening right now, they can see these slides, correct?
Yeah, no, they're there.
No, no.
If they're just listening, no, they cannot see the slides, but if they are tuned in via Zoom, they will.
Okay, so just every now and then you might want to, without going through the whole thing, just make certain that the numbers are clear. So basically, you'd be adding 300, I can't see that full number, $360,000 additionally to marketing.
Yes, so in, if we use the current allocation methodology for the 2021 overage value, we would be contributing 368,000 change to marketing. And if our projections prove out for the rest of the year, we would add another 328,000 to the 22 ballot for marketing.
And that assumes that there would be a, excuse me. That assumes that there would be a ballot question that would, and we'll show you a ballot question like this in a moment, that would ask the voters to retain the excess funds and leave them in the current allocations, just to be clear to all of us. That's what we're trying to do.
Correct.
Right, so I think those are sort of the extent of the pure numbers and sense presentation. So if you have questions about, you know, those, then if not, we can kind of move into options for council. So again, there's two, two questions here that appear to be, you know, that will be before council. The most critical one right now is the 21 overage, over collection of the 900, excuse me, $684,000 roughly. And I'll use that number as 683 and change. But the 684, which is in excess of the $900,000 estimate that was made pre-COVID rebound. So council at this point has really two options as to those 21 over collections. One would be to refund the amount in some fashion, or ask the voters to allow the city to retain those funds and expend them in some fashion that also will be a decision for council to make if that's the route you choose to take. Because there does appear that there will be a 22 overage as well, additional option would be to request permission to keep the 22 funds now, even though we don't really know how much that will be exactly. So then, of course, refund option would be available for 22, but that decision would be made, and we know how much those collections would be. I would note that there was a discussion about trying to turn off, if you will, 22 collections in a fashion that would prevent those collections from, over collections from occurring. Again, I'll defer to Jared for a moment about how that might look and the timing of that. And quickly, just talk about that.
Yeah, so again, the concept would be we stop collecting lodger's tax at some point in time during the year so that we don't get into an overage situation. Logistically, very challenging, having our 172 lodger's tax vendors turn off their collections all at the same time. There's a lot of things that could happen. But I did run the math, and we would begin collecting over that value in approximately September. So we would likely need to be in the community talking about trying to turn that off now, yesterday maybe. But that, that is one of the challenges. And, you know, arguably, we would have a real struggle trying to get cooperation from every vendor in the city to stop it. And then arguably, then ask them to turn it back on on January 1st.
Yeah, just to be clear, that, to add more complication to that, we would ask them to turn off the three and a quarter percent and continue to collect the old 2%, because the 2% is not subject to the limit, only the new portion will be. But it's a logistical challenge, but I also want to just mention it so that in case someone's listening in terms of that being an idea. So the more likely alternative would be to, and, you know, we can continue to explore that idea. If council chooses to, you know, want to look into that a bit more. But the more likely scenario would be that you would then also be looking at a 22 over collection that would also be subject to that same decision-making between a refund or an election. The current over collection in 21 has to be either voted on or refunded by the end of 22. So that's why that issue is the more urgent issue. The 22 over collection, assuming it occurs, could all, could be dealt with with a refund or a ballot question on that issue prior to the end of 23. So the urgent issue currently is the 21 items.
Could I see if there's any council questions on the item of just turning off the collections spigot, if you will? Does any council have questions or support for that option?
I have questions. I'm not really sure of that option myself. It's a logistical challenge.
Right, okay.
Other counselors? I'll also say, yeah, I'd love to say that I think it would be a logistical challenge. But I appreciate you raising it, and I think it's important for the public to know that we considered that.
So I guess now, so again, the question would be refund versus ballot question. Council gave direction again to prepare ballot questions. But I think the initial place, you know, to look at a refund method, and it's thinking makes sense to look at it right here, is that staff did brainstorm, we had a wide variety of staff, finance, myself, Brian, the people involved in the brainstorming session to come up with ideas and methodologies for a potential refund. So there was a more detailed listing of some options that were considered in the agenda doc. But again, this refund would be an option in lieu of a ballot question, or as, in the event that there's a failed ballot question, and keeping in mind that if there's a failed ballot question, we would have, you know, approximately a month to conduct a refund prior to the end of 22. So one of the primary considerations was something that could be, something that could occur quickly, something that would be easy to implement, low cost to implement. And the one that floated to the top via, after all those discussions, was a utility bill credit. So anyone who, the proposal would be, anyone who has a fertility account with the city would receive a credit on that account. And Jared, you can go through the numbers quickly.
Yeah, so, so speaking just of the 2021 overage, if we applied a uniform utility credit, utility bill credit to all accounts, that would result in an approximately $90 credit that we could apply. And, you know, it would apply until somebody's bill used it up, right? Across all of the enterprises that are on that.
The same amount, they would all get the same amount.
Everybody would get $90, and those who spent, you know, $45 in one month would get two months of credit, right? Somebody who spends $110 would get $90 credit. It's even for everybody. If we apply that just to residential accounts, that number goes up to 135 approximately. So that would be carrying out commercial users. And in some of our investigation on this, we looked particularly at the Colorado Springs utilities scenario. City of Colorado Springs is affecting a refund via that method, and they only afforded that to residential customers within their city. So there are a number of considerations of, we could slice and dice it to residential only. We could slice it where people who live outside of city limits do not receive it. Those would be logistical decisions to be made. But overall, staff kind of came to the consensus that if we need to do it both expedient and quickly, particularly in the case of a November failure of a ballot question, this would be the best method.
Questions? Jared?
I have one comment, just if we discuss this option, that I think the option to go with the refunds to the if we go into this direction. But if we go into the direction, I think the residential accounts would make more sense because they are impacted versus the commercial accounts that probably have benefits of, well, not all of them, but businesses tend to have. More visitors, so they have the benefits. Giving all benefits might be, might be nicer than. That would be my preference on if we look at this option.
Right, and we discussed that, those issues as well. I think that the other issue that we discussed in terms of residential accounts is that there's a fairly significant percentage of those that are tenant occupied. So if landlords, under our code, the landlord is always responsible for the billing. The landlord has the option of allowing a tenant to put the billing in their name. And if they've done that, then in effect, the tenant would get the credit. If the landlord has not done that. If the landlord has not done that, then effectively the landlord will get the credit. Theoretically, you know, it would impact rent, but that's direct. So that's another issue in terms of how to figure. So it, it could be difficult to go in and sort those out because we don't necessarily know the property's rented via the utility. So we discussed just a choice that incorporated sort of a broad brush approach over all those accounts, but I think the division between clearly commercial and residential would be easy.
And just for additional context, we applied those same numbers to what we're projecting for 2022 overage to also provide the $81 for all based on those 2022 collections and 120 for per residential. Just in context for the over collections we're expecting.
Okay. So now moving to, so there were four potential valid questions provided in the agenda doc. This was prepared in coordination with D Wizer. I don't know whether he's on yet or not, which is sort of mail time. His schedule looks like he's on. So Dee, welcome, and I don't know how much of that you heard, but we'll allow you to speak and just at least say hello. So moving forward into the potential ballot questions, and again, I will, I will say that this sort of starts in my mind from the simplest approach to slightly more complicated approach. And again, not to set forth preference at all, but just to give council a broad, you know, opportunity to see what some of the language might look like. This is a simple authorization to retain the 21 excess and to retain the revenues for the purposes originally approved in, like, in 2021 for lodger's tax. So again, it would not involve reallocation. Questions about this one? The next one. The next one in, well, okay, this one is language to retain 21 and 22, again, keeping the same purposes as directed in 2021. This language is a bit more complicated and I can ask Dee to chime in, but this is a good opportunity to remind council and the listeners that the treatment of the overage from 21 under Tabor is slightly different than the treatment of the 22 overage in the sense that the 22 overage is for a full year. So the 21 overage could be refunded without invoking the penalty provision in Tabor to reduce the tax rate moving forward. In 22, that wouldn't be the case. So those collections in 22, if there was a refund, would in effect reduce the rate going forward as a percentage of the overage to the amount authorized to be collected. So the extra language in here has to do with acknowledging that and being a bit more detailed about keeping revenues in 22 and keeping the existing rate that was approved in 21. So I see you, you've shown your face, Dee. If you have anything to add to that, please feel free to jump in.
No, you've got it just right, Dirk.
So again, this is 21 and 22 using this pre-existing approved purposes. So next one, this will be 21 only and offering an opportunity for council to determine that and to ask the voters to spend the excess revenues for alternative purpose. That's the TBD portion and then also the, and the piece in brackets above that, any other revenues, you know, there would be an option to change the allocation of the future years of the tax via language here. So in other words, you would say maybe keep the revenues in 21 in excess of the $900,000 and may the city spend those funds on, and, and any other revenues collected from the lodger's tax going forward for the valid purposes. So I put that brackets in there because again, allows the option. If you just want to do a one-time reallocation of 21, then that's an option. I know council has discussed the idea of seeking a approval for keeping the 21 overage now, possibly reallocating it for that one, one-time reallocation and then revisiting a reallocation in the spring of 23. So again, this language would need to be fine tuned depending on council's preferences in that regard.
So could I ask a question on the, if we refunded both years, for example? What change would that do to the lodger's tax rate? What would it drop to?
It would depend on the overage in 22.
Based upon our projections?
Right, so it would be a percentage, the overage as a percentage of the total amount of collections would reduce the rate going forward by that percentage.
Based upon your current projections, what would it actually?
It would be based on the actual collections.
Based upon what's your current projection of the actual collections are?
Yeah, it's, sorry, the 2 million, yeah, the projection for 22, sorry, was 2 million. So the overage over the 2 million is applied as a percentage to the 2 million would be the reduction.
I understand, but what's the percentage? So going forward, if we chose to do that, given the current projections, what would lodger's tax be in the future? How would it change?
It would, it would be an approximate 26% reduction.
26% in just, in just the additional.
Into 3.25.
So 26% of 3.25, which is about?
Point eight.
Sorry?
Point eight.
Well, we could go back.
Not 0.8%. So, so it would go down to 2.5?
80% of three and a, three and a quarter.
So it would go from 3.25 to 2.45 essentially.
Let me go back to the numbers.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering because interesting way of looking at it too. If we wanted to reduce the lodger's tax, that would be a way to do so.
That would have the effect of reducing lodger's tax moving forward. And again, Dee, I would look to you to, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, the one additional complexity is the question your voters passed in 21 authorized the rate of 3.25%. They're also authorized that rate to be reduced from time to time and then increased back up to the 3.25%. So arguably, we could comply with the underestimate provision by reducing the rate for a period of time and then bringing it back up to the 3.25%. You may recall the state of Colorado did that with respect to the marijuana tax. They had a marijuana tax holiday for a day and then reinstituted it.
And that doesn't need another vote? It could just be done by a city council?
That was the state's position on the marijuana tax and that's something Dirk and I probably should talk about a little more, if that's a direction you want to go in.
Be the easy way.
It doesn't, it doesn't involve though a reallocation of, of purposes.
The only way, that's, the only way to reallocate would be to have a valid question. You know, so you could do a refund now and not impact the tax rates going forward because again, it's a partial year. And then wait until the spring of 23 and do a reallocation ballot question at that point, along with the question to retain it or not, depending on how you would do it at that point. So there are a lot of forks in the road here, but yes, the only way to change the allocation would be to have another election.
But that could be independent of this question.
Yes, it could. And I think that's important to note that whatever you do with 21, for instance, doesn't close the door as the end of the options moving forward into 22. So for instance, if you left 21 under the current allocation, still seek a reallocation in 22 and, and moving forward in the spring of 23.
And you could combine, you, you can either combine the reallocation with some of these questions as we drafted here, or you could have a separate reallocation question either at one of these elections or at some future election.
So I just want to say that where we left it and things change and we all get more information, where we had last left it, I believe, was we were looking at a ballot question for the 2021. Now we've all had time to think about it and read other information and thank you for the work that you put into it.
Sure, and I would just say there's one other valid question, but it's effectively the same idea as 21 and 22.
Exactly, so I guess the question is to open it up is what is council's thinking since time has passed and we have the proposed process for refunding? If we go there.
So when I was running for election, I remember, and I don't know who said it, but it was like basically the first time that the lodging community and arts and culture and we've all been on board was with this original lodger's tax and like getting an increase. And we've been trying to get an increase for a long time, but no one could ever come together and decide, and this was kind of like the it, right? Has, do we, does, do we know what the other communities feel about the, this, like the ballot questions, like how, like, should it be, how do they feel like it should be kept or given back or reallocated? Like, do you know?
Yeah, no, I don't know. And I know that Tom is here. We, we discussed outreach over to the stakeholders and the citizens. This might be a good time to talk about ideas of next steps and timing. So would you bounce forward, Dirk? Sorry. So the timing on this is that what I suggested we do, first of all, we've already notified the clerk of our intent to participate. So we have a September 6th last council meeting that would be available to approve a ballot question or a decision on, you know, whatever you wanted to do at that point. So that leaves August the 2nd, August the 16th and September the 6th as decision points for council moving forward. My suggestion in the agenda doc was that we schedule this for discussion and possible action on August the 2nd, keeping in mind that we would in the interim seek some more input from stakeholders and from the community, up to and including some sort of, you know, hearing process or public input at a minimum before council at that meeting. So I think the question would be, you know, how long, you know, and I, and I do know that, and Tom can maybe tell you steps that were taken to just to get the word out, this was being discussed today. I think Bid sent out an email blast about it.
Yeah, yeah, so Tim Walsworth sent out, I think, four or 500 people on his email list. The link that we sent, that we created for the survey, so far we've only got nine responses granted just now on Friday. We could consider re-correcting the message to be more aggressive. I think anytime you put lodger's tax messaging, you know, those, so those are right. So right now, we're just waiting for the feedback on this survey to kind of, Tim did reach out.
So we don't know. But hopefully we would have a review of that.
I just, I guess would be like if we put a ballot question out, do we have the support of Bid and all the agencies and the hotel community? Not that we have to have it or we have to please everyone, but just like if we decided to try to go out for more money, transportation and housing and things that are like, you know, affected by tourism, things that maybe weren't funded in the original ballot question, would we have their support as well? Or would we only have their support for the original ballot language? Or, you know, I know you don't have the answer, but that's kind of like my thought process. And then also if I remember, we were kind of middle of the road when it came to lodger's tax for communities or in the region and around us from a past presentation. Am I correct? Middle of the road, right? And so.
After the increase.
After the increase, yeah. After the increase, middle of the road, not the highest, not the lowest, but sort of like in the middle. So my question is, is that like for middle of the road, that this money is, should go to mitigating the impacts of tourism. It shouldn't, we shouldn't decrease it back down to be a lower sales tax, but lower lodger's tax, sorry, right? Like, I don't know, in my mind, that's what I'm thinking out loud, is that like instead of going back to like decreasing the lodger's tax back down, like shouldn't we figure out how to spend the money to mitigate the impacts of tourism better potentially with more support if we can find that? I don't know.
Well, I don't think council was fully, I don't think we'd fully like gotten on board. I'm fully gotten on board with whether we were going to refund or whether we were going to ask to allocate it to something else. So I was just, I was making sure that if we decided to refund, that we knew that step if we chose not to reallocate. I just wanted to make sure I understood all the impacts of whatever actions we might take. Wasn't the right recommendation.
Yeah.
I wanted it to be really clear times when people ask questions about what happens if, sometimes it's interpreted as that's what I want to have happen. So I wanted to make sure that was respected.
Yeah, and the messaging here, sorry to interrupt, but the messaging here can be complicated because of the variety of factors. So, you know, if we narrowed down the scope of what the, the possibilities are, then we can do a little better job perhaps messaging to people about.
So I'll come back with where we had left it, and that's why I'm coming up to say has anybody changed? Where we had left it was we were going to do, this was, and again, if we could change our minds, that's why we have study sessions on this. We were going to do a ballot option as a means of actually testing the water for what the appetite was for a re-ation. Now, that doesn't mean it wasn't set in stone, so we have the option to rethink it. So that's where I'm trying to get a sense of, has anyone have a different view from what their position had been the last meeting?
I do slightly. I really appreciate seeing the ballot questions written out, so thank you, Dirk and Dee and D Wizer. It's helpful. And I think when I first was considering this at that last study session, I was thinking that it was too complicated to combine years. As I look through the questions myself, now I actually don't think it's too complicated. I actually think it's pretty straightforward and potentially even more transparent to, to the voter to include both years, and I'm talking about, about question, not a refund. And if you were to do a ballot question, to me, I originally thought just deal with 2021 at first, get that taken care of and then deal with 2022. I, I, I reconsidered that, given the language. I think that it's pretty straightforward, it's not too complicated, and again, most transparent to include both years at one time. And I also just, I'll just keep going since I'm going to share my position, is that I'm interested in going, I'm interested in going to the voter myself because I'm interested in, you know, letting the people decide. I think we've had conversations about the fact that it was narrowly passed. And so I think that this, and, and I think for me, it's very difficult to, to think about where the people will lie on this issue because it's a really interesting time and difficult time for many residents with inflation, high living, high gas prices. It's very difficult to tell what people are going to stand on it. So in that situation, for me, it seems the best to go to the people and let them come forward with, with their vote to make a determination. Of course, if it doesn't pass, then we refund. If it does pass, then we would obviously be able to keep them. And to take it a step further, my, I would like to, I would like to keep it relative full in that aspect of allocation. I'm not suggesting myself that we change the purpose for spending, but I would suggest that we, I would suggest that we don't keep the same allocation. I, from the feedback that I'm receiving, the reason, what intrigued many people about the increase in lodger's tax was the transportation and the arts and culture and potentially the impacts of tourism. I'd like to see that funding increased and, and that with, take the excess to transportation, arts and culture. And, and lead the, and lead the, as to council direction. By the way, we did receive an email or two, I believe, on various aspects of the arts and culture funding, one including the museum, the Durango Museum. Arts and culture could technically include things like that. I mean, and that would be council, this council took the side of that, at that, at that various year. But I'd like to see us take it out to people and do it both at once.
I want to very personally also, and also we've gotten a couple emails about housing, like we've gotten for the police, increased police force with tourism, like there's been lots of rumors emails with ideas on impacts that we are not funding with that, so.
Has anyone else had a change of view?
My view was to refund. I, I still believe that that would be the best option for 2021. I think the point that was made by Councilor Joseph. I think the point that was made by Councilor Joseph is absolutely correct. We need a ballot and we need proper feedback from our community and businesses. The question is, are we going to make it at September sixth to have a ballot language, options for allocations, and there's no way, in my opinion. So we can spend fifty to forty to seventy thousand dollars on ballot question. We, we might not be able to do a good job getting the pulse of the community and businesses, have a risk of ballot that fails, a lot of staff time and meetings, which, I mean, we're going to spend a significant amount of money to address six hundred thousand dollars. If we, as a council, are able to make a decision and say, let's refund it on utility bill for twenty twenty one, at least our community, the people who live in our community, and I'm thinking hundred and thirty five dollars might not be a lot, but is, is a small amount for people that are wealthy. But for the people that are struggling, I think that is a very welcome little check. I, I do agree that it does not fit really the purpose of lodger's tax, but we have a luxury problem that we have six hundred thousand dollars too much. How can we use that? When the lodger's tax allocation was presented for the ballot last year, the amount that was allocated or estimated for that, they have, so the total amount that was estimated when this all passed, has been collected, has been allocated to those purposes. So the extra amount is something that, in my opinion, financially and practically makes own sense for twenty twenty one to refund and for twenty twenty two. I completely agree, it requires very good community feedback from lessons, businesses.
Counselor Baxter?
I'll go last, or?
Go ahead.
Sure, okay, so I am, I thank you for the work you put into it. I also support taking this to the voters, and I believe the language is clear enough that you could do it to requests in one, two years in one. And to me, I, I think I want to be really clear, I've always supported increasing the lodger's tax, I've always had issues with the allocation. And because I think that all of us, the residents in this community are so impacted for better and for worse because of tourism, we have a benefit to that as well. So I would like to see the allocation changed, and I think this is an opportunity to do it. And then again, you have a second opportunity if you need to the next year. Um, Counselor, to your point, the voters will decide what's important to them. It is the question we are, we're not deciding for them, we're, in my view, we're giving them the option to decide, particularly when this was such a close vote. So I'd like to say, though, that I do believe we could deter, if we went that far, I do believe we could determine guidelines for any potential reallocation and then, to your point, have the time to test that this summer. Would you support housing? Would you support public safety? Would you support transportation? There are, with a real sense of how is it impacting locals, so that is my support is to go forward.
So to make sure I understand, you're suggesting ballot both years in November?
Yes.
And then reallocation potentially same year?
Mm-hmm. It would be the, the number three items, is that the one, and would we take both items? Would we take reallocation?
Well, when you say reallocation, do you mean, do you mean taking the excess and doing something with it? Because that's not reallocation.
No.
So, so if you want to reallocate the entire lodger's tax distribution, you want to do that in the same ballot as you're doing?
That's what he said we could do.
I know, he said we could do that, I'm asking if that's what you want.
And so you want to do that in November? So would it be a second, a second question?
No, it would, because the way Dirk has, if I understand it correctly, the way he's presented this, item number three, you could do both, this maybe doesn't have both years, you could do both years. And you could say, instead of, and I'm just going to make that, instead of fifty five percent going to marketing, we want fifty five minus X percent, whatever that number is.
So you'd combine the excess and the reallocation all into one, okay, just to make sure I understand.
Is that not the same?
No, she was, keep, keep the over collection and allocate that somewhere else. She, I don't think you even mentioned reallocating the lodger's.
Correct, and thank you, and I, yeah, and I'm very glad you're bringing it up, so it helps me clarify mine. And I'm mostly, I'm talking about asking the voters to let us keep the overage, first and foremost.
For both years.
For both years, in one question, so the one, what is it, one point five million? Let's call it around one point five million. So asking the voters if they'll let us keep that, and then in the same question, putting it towards, that one point five million towards transportation, the portion and transportation and arts and culture, if you will, to keep it very simple. I think that's simple, that's mine, but yours is.
It's broader.
Yeah, it's, it's really, let's call it, if I'm understanding, the whole shebang.
Yeah.
The whole shebang, it's the overage, it's the lodger's tax, and it's a reallocation, okay?
And I'm not certain where that fits with Jessica's.
No, I was more with Melissa, I'm more than Melissa than, and, and to keep the, like, keep the overage, that's first and foremost, for both years. I think we do both years in one ballot question. I think that if we get enough community feedback and we reach out to like the good, like Craig Partners, we can get a good ballot or a good ballot question with some language on what to do with the overage. I'm not sold on just transportation and arts and culture. I'm thinking that depending on what comes back, that potentially we could switch it up a little bit, but I don't know. I'm not backing one way or another, I just want one to have the community engaged and involved and get their feedback and then try to put a question out that reflects something that lots of organizations could get. Okay, and then I say that after that ballot question, we see if it passes the ballots, like if it fails and we have a backup of refunding by utility bills or whatever. And then we know like, okay, people are not interested in funding transportation or people are not interested in funding arts or whatever, right? And we kind of test it out for a year, and then maybe in a year or two after, we kind of see what impacts are we seeing and benefits are we seeing from the lodger's tax, what are we doing with it? Is it working, you know, all the things? Then we can see if we want to go to change the ballot language for the whole shebang, I don't later think I'm saying that.
Yeah, that's, that's nice, that's true, and Counselor, thank you for bringing that up to get that clarification.
So I totally agree that doing twenty one and twenty two together on a ballot, asking to retain that money to be used for specific purposes, that we figure out where we want to go with that. I also am not certain that transportation and arts and culture are where I wanted to go exactly, or what might, I think a little bit more discussion about that somewhere. And I, I do think that reallocating the lodger's tax, you know, when you look at, I think that would be a future question, not a November question. And the challenge for me is that if you look at twenty twenty two lodger's tax revenue projections as it currently stands, it's two million dollars toward marketing. And I think that was not, I don't believe that was, I mean, I, that was not what I envisioned when we did the lodger's tax allocation. I envisioned an increase for marketing to a level where they felt it was what they could achieve, which was more like one point three. So I'm really uncomfortable with the fact that there's an extra seven hundred thousand dollars going into marketing that may not really be what any of us, I know it wasn't what I envisioned, but, so I, I'm thinking that we should do this ballot measure in November and then have a conversation about what do we do with the ballot, with the lodging tax as it's currently allocated? Do we want to change that in April? Do we want to do a ballot for that in April? And if we choose not to, we choose not to, but at least have that conversation, because I, I do not believe anybody envisioned that, that much increase in the market.
So could I clarify, so you would do, just to make sure I heard correctly, you would do both the excess in one vote, the excess for twenty twenty one and twenty two for a different purpose for that excess, right? On the timing of determining to do the big shebang, the whole, you know, reallocation, if you will, when to, if, and you're saying put that on an April ballot?
Earlier, I would.
Okay, would be in April, so then that discussion would need to help, if you're helping a vendor plan, they would need to know what council's thinking, I would think by the end of the calendar year.
By who?
By any vendor, like, let's visit Durango, whoever your, is, who would be receiving that kind of money, more or less? Yeah, okay, I'm just trying to get a sense of, well, I'm trying to get a sense of what do we expect of ourselves and when do we expect to, we're going to make a decision on that to be, to give enough notice to any vendor that you're not going to probably have the same, you may not have the same amount of money.
Well, what I'm, what I'm envisioning is that when we look at that possible reallocation, if, if visit Durango, for example, didn't budget two million dollars for marketing, so that's not what they envisioned anyway. So I don't think that there's a real big challenge there about that, because I don't think we're going to go back to six hundred thousand. I would imagine that's not going to be the case. So I, personally, I think one of the ways where we made a mistake was we raised the percentages without putting a cap on market and then be able to allocate anything that went over that cap into these other categories that were pre-approved. That's where I think that we made a mistake, and I think that's an easy mistake to remedy, so.
I would, just thinking, like, I thought, like, I disagree with what you're saying at all, because I potentially twenty percent agree, but thinking like, we keep saying marketing and I, like, I kind of hate that, because I know we're, especially because of the Durango campus, we're so focused on, you know, we're done with the tourism, the sustainable, the sustainable tourism and stuff like that. And so what if, like, the money that they're spending on this, like, you know, they hired the new way, sustainable coordinator, like, what if those things they're doing is amazing and we love it and we want more of it, right? And that's what I'm like, I'm not saying, and I look at our sheet of like what other towns spend on marketing, and again, we're right in the middle of the road, we're not so much, we're not, even two million, it wouldn't put it over like, oh my gosh, we spent way more than anyone else. Like, we're like, right, I'm not saying we want to be whoever's spending more, I don't even have a list in front of me if it's Brecken or Durbeo or who, like, I don't know. Like, I'm not saying we want to be those communities, but I'm just saying, like, I, I don't know if I'm ready to say, like, I want a cap or whatever. A discussion, yes, but I'm not, like, saying, like.
Well, that's what I was recommending. I want to involve onward a discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
You want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to ask maybe staff on what the process would be, make the September sixth ballot question deadline. And also cost wise, I, I think, so we, we know a ballot cost between forty and seven thousand. What other campaigning, I guess, to, to outreach programs, feedback, just all the steps that you can imagine. For us as a council, we have what, three, two or, two or three more meetings before September sixth? We, we can't, I'm just looking practically and realistically, so what are we looking at?
Dirk, before you answer on this timing, I want to make very clear, we can talk about this anything we want, but once a decision is made, no one, particularly council, can advocate for or against a ballot. There's no campaigning, there's no staff time, so I want, I'm not certain you're clear on that.
Information.
It's not, it's very strict.
I mean, staff can answer questions, you know, that's one thing under the Campaign Practices Act, but yes, we'd have to be, we'd have to be in full compliance with the Campaign Practices Act, which means that we wouldn't spend public dollars advocating one way or the other. I think your numbers for an election are probably in the range of what Fay has told me that it would cost. I don't know that we're going to know for sure until it's all said and done, but that's probably the range. So other costs would just be staff time to prepare, and that's, or that's what we do. So I wouldn't count that as extra costs here. The timing and what we need to do is have council adopt a resolution to either put a ballot question on the ballot or refund, those are, were, you know, those are the two choices. You have three meetings, which is actually in some ways quite a lot. So I guess I would say my preference would be that we not wait until the sixth, because if we can't arrive at a final decision on the sixth, then you would have to schedule a special meeting, it would be very difficult to notice between the sixth and the ninth, but it's possible. My, again, my suggestion is that we put this on the agenda for discussion and public input in some format, we, you know, get guidance from council about that in two weeks. That way you could get that kind of input. And then if you're comfortable making a decision that night, we could prepare, you know, a resolution that had a couple of options, it sounds like we're sort of getting close to a consensus, yeah, on.
You have three.
One option. So that would be my suggestion. The preference would be, certainly if you're not comfortable making a final decision on the second, we could have the sixteenth. That would still allow, you know, three weeks before our deadline. That's plenty of room for me, anyway. So Dee, again, you want to chime in on anything I just said?
No, you've got it right, Dirk.
Yeah, so that would be, so that, just a follow up question. The, the, let's assume it's Melissa and Jessica's general consensus that passes on a ballot question to keep, to keep the excess revenue. Would there still need to be a specification on what that, keeping that money involves? So we will need to have probably several meetings to discuss what, what we're going to spend.
Sure, and you could have another study session, certainly, or you could schedule a discussion time, you know, in a regular meeting. The two choices.
Well, you and Jose could collect input also from us, so that we have, we kind of have a generalized idea where we're going with that before we.
So what I'd like to say, and then I'm going to call on Melissa, I want to be real clear, we have consensus. Melissa, Kim, and Jessica all agreed to do a, a vote with looking at the excess for twenty twenty one and twenty two with a re, possible reallocation, a proposed reallocation of that excess.
And I don't think we agreed to, I think we supported that.
Right, there's, there's a consensus in that, so I guess the point I want to say now is, you have direction.
Are you a part of the consensus or?
No, I, I was, had a separate, I had the larger, but because there is a consensus, I will work with a consensus. So let me say that, so no, I had a different view, but I recognize that three people.
I want to be clear that the consensus includes a reallocation of, assuming that's what we're talking about, a reallocation to both twenty one and twenty two.
Not the allocation. Keeping, keeping the budget and allocating.
That's what I can.
Well, and the one, so one time allocation of those overages for both years, for a purpose yet to be determined.
Can I, that's what I'm going to talk about, I'm not wanting to interrupt anybody, but that's exactly what I want to hit on. So a couple of things, first of all, on the, the timing, it's, it's my, I don't want to do a whole lot of campaigning. I really don't, I want to educate the community on this, but really, it's, I really want to get the pulse of the community and let the community decide if they want us to spend this overage. But given the timing, that is one of the reasons why I really, I wanted to keep it simple with regards to how we spend that excess funding, and for me, simple was, we know how the voters narrowly approved it, but they did approve it. And what I felt like carried it was the transportation and the arts and culture. So if we stuck with something along that line, it, given the timeline, it might give us more time. If we have time to do a polling and a review of that polling to understand where the community sentiment lies, I fully support it. But I feel like entering, bringing in a new, a new funding issue into the equation at this time, let's just say housing, for example, maybe not the best source of funding for this, funding closes too soon, it's not enough time, and I also don't think it's sufficient money to make a dent in housing. If we want to address housing, I'd rather see that addressed with, for example, the two thousand and five reauthorization of tax at council, so determines that at a later time, but I just wanted to add that. Given the timing, that's kind of where I was going in my mind.
I think you have a really good point about what's already been approved.
Yeah.
And then allocating to those three approved items, because I do think that part of the challenge, that the closeness of the vote was how much of it was and not enough of it was going to others, so I think you do have a really good point.
And I agree that we don't, I don't want to complicate things too much, but in the survey that the city set out, there's like a spot in there that's like, if you choose other, what would you do? And if you got like an overwhelming majority, like, say more than I people overspend, or of course, but an overall majority that saved one thing, like, we've only gotten, what, sixty males and like, you know, it's kind of all of it. Then maybe, then maybe we could just discuss that as part of it, that's all I was.
And I'd be very happy to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Could we own that ballot, since that's consensus, for that use, include the option for refund?
Well, I think it gets denied, then we do a.
No, but you can leave it as an option as well, do you want this excess money to be refunded? Or spent according to the lodger's tax ballot from last year? Do you want this excess money to be refunded or spent according to the largest tax ballot from last year or?
You asked a question, and I wondered about that, and full transparency to the voters. But I guess that's a question, Dirk and Dee, can you guys tell us why you didn't add that as an option when you created these drafts?
Oh, you respond to that, because you have to raise up my request.
Well, for the most part, I just haven't seen that in other questions of this type. But I would say that the state, in doing the marijuana tax question, was Proposition BB, did specify in the ballot language the method of refund that will be used if the question didn't pass. And so if that's something council wanted to do, we could do that.
Right, that would be just adjunct to the information in the ballot language about if it doesn't pass, here's what would happen.
I, I would, I would like to see this option, but this is a question to council, because you could give the keeping the excess amount, or, you know, what we do with the excess amount, the option is A, B, and C, refund, keeping it for the exact same allocations or for use.
And I'm gonna throw out, I think it complicates it very much, because the language will say, you know, you'll have a preamble around it. So again, into the ballot, I'm just trying to keep it very straightforward, do you support doing this? If you don't, you've got the language that says, you know, not within the vote, but you've got all of the rationale for it, yes.
The reason I bring it up is because we imply that we want residents to have a vote, but we don't give them the option to vote for refund.
They vote.
Why not? By voting no.
By voting no, they vote.
That's how they vote for a refund.
They vote no.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I.
They say, no, we don't, we don't want you to do this, and your option then is you will get the refund.
I, I have a personal feeling that if that option was on the ballot, then we as a council, we have a big problem, because we'll have 70% voter turnout that says, I'll take the refund. And then we as a council have, okay, it's a refund, but we just spend $100,000 documenting that, trying to make that decision. And that's okay, these plans through ballot, and then we have statistically correct.
$100,000 is not the numbers that we've been mentioning, so let's have a point of information. But let's also go to where is the support? And now we've moved to possible allocations of that, keeping it just at the, you know, not the percentages, but the purposes. You've talked about transportation, you've talked about arts and culture, you've talked about city determined, council determined. So is there support, I've heard three, I think I did, I did the same thing, and I, I also can support.
I'd like to wait till the next.
You wanna wait?
Yeah, and to get the survey information if it's applicable, and maybe some community, more community provide email, those things.
Okay.
Like, you know, just, yeah, just some more, I would, I would appreciate that. Like, staff reach out to different entities, whether it's Bib or, you know, Visit Drango, what do, what do they support? And.
Is there support for that?
Yep.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And I, and I, and I think that the next conversation is exactly, I think we have kind of made a recommendation for moving forward here.
So Dirk, do you, from a timing point of view, could you, would you put that on the first meeting in August or the second, that feedback?
No, the 19th.
Well, it's up to council.
We are on the 19th today, so our next meeting would be the first of.
The 16th would be the next, the first meeting in August, second, second meeting 16th. So if you, there would be another study session on August 2nd. I don't know whether there's time to go into those details or not, or add an item to the August 2nd study session. But my thought was if council takes, has an opportunity on the 2nd to get public input at that time, you still wouldn't have to make a decision.
Right.
You could make some decision-making that night to direct the details of the resolution. So what I would propose, the draft resolution that has all the language in it, except for the blank about the one-time reallocation of the two years funding. And to be clear, we'll go back to the original funding in '23, unless you have a separate ballot question to change it. Because we're talking, what I understand is '21 and '22, one-time reallocation. So we do a resolution that's complete, except for the blank on that reallocation, and then have it for you on the 2nd of August, along with either public input, or if you wanna have a hearing on the question, or however you wanna do that. And I know that Tom and Aaron have sort of been in charge of trying to make sure we get good public input on this. So anything that you can provide them on that in terms of format, if you're not ready to make it in the 2nd, we re-agendize it for the 16th, that still allows the three weeks, that would be my suggestion.
Can I just get clarification? You're using the word reallocation.
Well.
Yeah, real, the overage, the overage is not allocated.
That's right. Well, the overage is what I'm trying to, what I'm suggesting, we allocate. So I wanna, and that's what I was suggesting, allocate to similar uses. But I'm not, I wasn't, I wanna make sure that we're, and maybe we'll be talking about it then, about a reallocation precedent, which is.
No, that's.
We're not talking about that now, right? Okay.
That's the big shebang, which is what.
Later, after.
Okay, good.
I hope that's not a four-letter word.
No, I appreciate that, though, so, so we have consensus for this, and we'll continue to discuss it for allocations.
And adding to the comment of not only looking at it, what's the appropriate amount or possible cap, but also what is being accomplished with the money that, and.
But that's the first feature of the conversation.
Right, right, all of that is the big shebang, right.
Do you think staff will have, so ready for the next meeting in terms of like, can you engage that?
Something.
Great. So we will look, I'm looking at Jose, so we're looking at the next study session. This will be on the topic.
And then the meeting.
Do you wanna do it for the session, or do you wanna actually just put it on the regular agenda?
That's why I'm.
For the regular meeting?
I think the regular.
We could do.
I had assumed you would put it on the regular agenda, but again, it'll be, it'd be a resolution with a blank in it. You could deliberate that night and give us direction to fill in the blank in a very specific way, which would then allow you to adopt the resolution that night, or it would be a place where you would come back up on the 16th. So I, I'm fine either way, I don't have an issue.
Does council support putting it on the council agenda, not the study session? Yes.
Dee, before we sign off, do you think we have good direction on the resolution?
Yeah, I think so.
I do too, I'm fine, so appreciate it.
So you got direction in advance and 15 minutes sooner, I think, than anticipated. I do want, again, thank you for looking into it, Dee, thank you for your support as well. Anything that we need?
I think that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
Just that we take a 10-minute break now and come back at 2:40, and we'll start in with the boards and commissions. Support whatsoever, we'll be ready by 2:40. Perfect. Melissa's the one who came up with the term.
Uh, yeah.
Good point, that's the part you gotta be here.
No, sure.
I mean, it's slang, it's not, okay.
So, speaking of.
Shebang, shebang.
I just wanna make sure we're culturally, we're talking about having like, someone at the town hall, big shebang.
A big what?
Banner, it says big shebang.
I don't like the town hall. Right.
Did you wanna say something, Kim?
I was just saying that Vay, the, the, Trey's bottom being. Now, I mean, you know, people say that all the time, it actually came from the godfather. There was a, I can't remember the guy's name, who was playing a part, but he was out living and just went bottom being, and it got picked up by everybody in the.
That's so funny.
It's funny that on the panel.
It is funny how it happens.
Because that's why, same time, right?
Yeah, really funny.
Yeah, it cracks me up.
Okay, so that was good decision-making. All right, moving on. Lots of big decisions we make today. Maybe not so good for everybody. We'll see. Okay, now boards and commissions, is that next? Okay. Okay, time to stand up.
Would you expect anything else from me?
Little bit of what you're asking.
Oh, cool.
Cool, thank you. Senator, please.
They have, might have districts.
He's gotta still have.
I wanna say this is not my work, so we'll lean on there as we'll join.
Casting stuff out, oh, see. Senator, you want me?
Go up the chair, squeeze in.
Boards and commissions.
I just.
That I can't give you.
Good. Sharing the survey? Oh, good, yeah. I couldn't find you before, Kim, I looked up with you. I'm gonna share it, which they say. I added you. Hey, are we back?
I think so.
Great. I'm gonna call us back to this meeting, thank you. All right, next, we are looking at the staff's recommendations regarding boards and commissions. Jose, have you want to introduce?
Sure, yes, I'll do an introduction before I pass it over to Kevin, Mayor and Council. This really stems from our retreat that we had, I think it was February, where we were talking about boards and commissions and seeing if there was a, a different way to go about it. And if we would look at, you know, how, if we could start over, how would we, how would we do it? We challenged our staff to come up with some different ideas of ways to, to look at it, while respecting the, the rule or just the process of understanding, they do not report to staff. They're definitely reporting to council, so this is a, a part for us to open up the conversation, provide some thoughts, some suggestions. By all means, it's not necessarily a hard and fast rule, that this is exactly how it goes, that is in your purview, but we definitely want to be able to help with those conversations. One of the things that, as you look at boards and commissions, that kind of shocked us is when we're looking at how many positions, I believe Fay said it was about 130 boards and commission members, when you take up all the boards and commissions. If you compare that to the full-time employees that we have, it's 350. So when you kind of put that together, that, that's a lot of positions to, to manage and, and take care of. Doesn't mean that they're not doing a good job, I don't mean that, it just shows the time work that's necessary at times to.
350 volunteers.
130.
130.
About 130, if you compare that with 350 full-time employees, you can start to see kind of sometimes how. you can start to see kind of sometimes how positions that have to take their staff direction and help out, as well as council in keeping up with each one of the positions, it does put a strain on it at times. So what we're looking at doing is is there ways to do it better, what have we learned? And the staff did a pretty good job with it of giving it a good try. I would say that it was a stretch in some familiar ways, because I think when you look at, anytime we look at how do we do things differently, we always kind of begin to look back at how we did it before and kind of naturally drift towards that. So with that, I'll pass it over to Kevin, who led the group of directors. And there was very, there are several directors that were part of it. Turi, Tom, and Sarah were some of them, but we also had more, but they are going to be here to help represent on these boards. And Kevin, take it away.
Sure. Thanks, Jose, for the kind of summary. You know, I think with staff, we have maybe a different set of lens than council does in terms of how this function, just because of the nature of our roles. And I think some of the things that we recognized as a committee, and we met four or five times over the last couple of months, was the significant value that our citizen advisors bring to the organization in terms of that issues, helping the policy setting that. It's almost like filtering before it gets to council, so the council doesn't have quite the heavy lift on certain issues. You certainly have seen many over the last couple of years, last several years, arts and rec in particular, they have rooms for people on many occasions on different issues. And I tend to, the board and the staff work to synthesize input to help get to a point where it gets to council. Arguably been vetted and ready for some meaningful dialogue, but something you can get through in a reasonable manner, knowing the amount of tasks that council spends on a day-to-day basis. So we absolutely recognize the value of citizen advisors. But knowing the context of what Jose just shared, we also thought about how resource-intensive managing. You know, it's broken down here in the memo that you've gotten, the new staff report. But essentially, there's 23 boards. Some are, we spent a fair amount of time on this evaluation, some we didn't really have to touch. But that's a lot, it's a heavy lift when you consider that council, in most part, has a liaison role and all but the quasi-judicial. They deal with the appointments on all of these. I know with boards that the council serves in a liaison role, there's the appointments, there's attending meetings, there's reporting up. And for staff, there's the, you know, monthly prep for setting agendas with the chair, preparing the agenda packets, posting leading, you know, getting minutes done on meetings, and often reporting up. So I think the question as opposed to us will, you know, if the constraints of history aren't part of this, what might this look like? And I, we did get some questions from Council Baxter that I think helped frame today's conversation. We'll walk through some of these. Didn't have an opportunity to really dig as deep as we would have liked to from last week. However, we did supplement. We gave you this just because it's a good reference. I know you've seen that, you're very familiar with it, just saying that. But then we also, staff did a little bit of an evaluation of some other communities that, you know, they aren't entirely like communities, but I think this gives you a snapshot of a handful of communities across the state in terms of what they're doing. Clearly, we have significantly higher number of boards and commissions than all of these. I think we had four of them that are alike in terms of the population size, but the types of amenities they serve or services they provide are slightly different, because I think a few of these have library districts and parks and rec districts. I don't know, this gives us a hard and fast rule, but what it does tell us, and there was some others here too that weren't included in this breakdown, not even kind of a like community, so we didn't include it. But citizen advisors are important, all of these. I found it interesting that a few of the communities like Montrose, they only have four boards or permissions.
Right.
And they seem to make it work now. Again, they have a library district and parks and rec district. I'm sorry, do not have a library, they do not have a rec center, they do not have arts district. So we have some, maybe a larger variety of services there to deal with. But they manage with far fewer boards and commissions, as did, you know, Evans Five and Firestone at 20,007. So I said 23 makes you question, well, how did he get here and what might be an alternative? So we essentially took what was in the boards and commissions manual, because we know that council worked on that pretty diligently in the last, what has been 16 months or something, 18 months. Well, three years, okay.
Oh, wait.
Well, in terms of the final product, where we're getting. You had your regulatory, which I'm going to put as regulatory slash quasi-judicial. And, you know, a lot of these relate to our land use and development process. And as a, as the committee reviewed this and talked about it, and what's written in the memo is really, I think there's an opportunity to review particularly the land use, ones that are involved, the land use planning commission, HBB Board of Adjustment, HBB being Historic Preservation and Design Review Board. And I think that collectively, my set of lenses, having been the community development director for quite a few years, system works. Is it onerous on staff to have a number of boards and commissions? Yes. But when these boards meet on a monthly basis, they usually have full agendas and significant issues to deal with. I did discuss this particular issue with community development staff. And things are very open for process improvement and recognizing that, you know, if you have 15 or 20 different people on three or four different boards that are doing the same project, you probably figure out a better way to do it. But I think they also express a real concern about losing some of the value you get in, let's say, a design review board review of a project, where they may take an hour on one project just on design elements. And so I think there's a little trepidation about what would we lose if we combined, let's say, a DRB with a PC? Because the PC has got to deal with the whole site plan and the larger context of community, as well as all the rules and regulations that are following in the land use code. So I think there's work to be done there. Haven't done the analysis yet, but I think we need to take a really close look, see what some of these other communities are doing, so that maybe we can streamline that process. But by and large, the committee's review kind of steered a little bit clear of any in-depth considerations for change on those, other than a commitment to take a closer look, particularly with the community development functions of the boards and commissions. There is a couple of other ones here, certainly the liquor licensing authority. In my understanding, and Dirk's out on our committee as well, and we talked about how that one functions. And it's got a very specific role, and it seems to go pretty smoothly. It works well, it's got a very, very specific role. They get through those meetings and Jose chairs are in three minutes. Right. So there was not much way of observations in changing that. Now, having said that, I think any amount of input from the council would be welcome. If there's observations on anything we've presented here that you see that might be an opportunity that we just didn't pick up on. But in terms of the quasi-judicial, we don't have a lot to kick the can at at this point in time. I think where we spent the majority of our time was in the advisory category. And there, there's 11 different advisory boards. And as you can see the list here, I'm not going to review all of these, but they also kind of fell into a little bit of a separate variety of categories, that that's where we spent our time looking at it. And let me just catch up on myself here. I think there's a couple of key takeaways here. One, I mentioned the fact that staff really values citizen participation for sure. And we've been doing it this way for a long time. Doesn't mean it can't be different, but I think they're very comfortable with having, you know, check-ins with a group of advisors to help guide the work that falls under the umbrella of STRAT Plan, COM Plan, and all the adopted plans and policy documents we have. We also know that we have several dedicated sales tax that require recommendations for boards and commissions. Yeah, for a board, let's put it that way. And right now, you have four boards, advisory boards, participating in that process, having been a part of that process for quite some time. I can tell you that it works, but it's been clunky from time to time in terms of alternating either opinions or recommendations, or it's bringing them all together. We usually get there, but sometimes it's a rough road to get in there, just because of the variety of opinions that we put, maybe 15 people in the room, which I guess could happen in the case of arts and rec, natural lands and multimodal, up to 15 anyways, that's a lot of folks trying to find consent, consensus even better. So we took that into consideration. And one of the thoughts here was, and I'm going to steer a little bit, maybe my view of this versus, or the committee's view was, these again aren't hard recommendations, but I think these are things that we saw that could potentially work. Is there other ways to do it? There's absolutely probably lots of different ways, and we're more than open to continue to develop if what we've presented here doesn't seem like the right way to go. But this was really an outside-the-box shot, and we thought we'd share it with you and get some feedback. And, you know, knowing that the boards and commissions currently are a function of the city council, these advisory boards primarily are. Is that something the council wants to continue? And I guess that isn't a question we've had to, been able to ask, because we really haven't been in this kind of setting before. Or would you want to be more of an ad hoc arrangement where, you know, staff has a new multimodal plan, and they just put a call to arms in the ring, put together a committee to work through it? We've done that in the past with COM plans, with arts and rec plans, although advisory boards have replaced. You still bring in a working group to really roll up their sleeves on these things. So really, an idea how for boards and commissions that we laid in, laid out in memo, was to really have one council-appointed advisory board that dealt with the dollars essentially. So any board recommendations necessary for use of a dedicated sales tax, that would be a council-appointed board that would need, as needed, to deal with those issues. It wouldn't have to be a monthly meeting. We also talked about it could potentially also serve as a board to do reviews and make recommendations on proposals. Because while I know times change from year to year, right now, we're in the era where we are putting a lot of money out there for the community, whether it be through lectures, tax, and arts and culture, whether it be through housing, our current economic opportunities programs. In particular, there may be more of the sustainability programs, get some things that are stuck to grow that will be coming away. So could this board also, as a very formal, functional board to the council, provide that oversight and direction on expenditures of those funds with recommendations to the council? But beyond that, then we were looking at the, you know, essentially six of the 11 boards, and they're listed here, and I'll call these ones out, the Creative Economy Commission, Infrastructure Advisory Board, Multimodal Advisory Board, Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Strategy and Long-Term Finance Advisory Board. While I would say that their, their input on a monthly basis is valued by the staff and is valued by the council, there's a lot of heavy lift here in terms of managing monthly meetings of these groups. So the idea that the committee put forth was, what if we collapsed these boards, six, and put them into a pool of folks who are interested and participated in the dialogue when it's necessary, rather than having these monthly meetings where, from time to time, I will tell you from the history that I have with the organization, time to time, those boards are talking about the same issues from month to month. And there's a little bit of uncertainty in terms of, you know, who should be listed? Who should be talking about this one or reviewing this issue? And then what you do is you have multiple boards reviewing the same issues. So in this case, I think you would have an issue, and you would just call a group of people together to review. And whether that pool of individuals are folks who apply, or we just put out a, you know, an advertisement for folks, we could have a standing pool, certainly. I know with, and certainly any of the committee members who want to chime in here, by all means. But, you know, if there's an issue like pickleball, well, we could just say, hey, we want to have a conversation about pickleball, and we bring together a working group. And then we may still have public meetings that are larger community-wide meetings, but they would really help guide the conversation, recommendations, work with the staff. But it wouldn't be a situation where the councils are essentially taking applications, interviewing folks for appointments, appointing. In fact, even, I think it's suggested in here, that council wouldn't even necessarily participate on its working groups. Although obviously, that's going to be a council decision. It could be a situation where you get to kind of step back from that particular process and let, let the kind of the community and the staff work with their groups, get the details organized, bring it forward at that point. If it's a money issue, we go to the advisory board that's been appointed. If it's not a money issue, maybe it's a policy issue, an adoption issue, then that just comes directly to staff to counsel after the group has completed their task. So maybe I'll stop there. Is there any questions on what I've covered so far? Because then, once I get past this, I'm going to kind of talk about some individual boards and some different approaches with the individual, maybe the remaining five and some of the other ones.
I think I'd like to hear the whole thing.
Okay, sure. Great, great.
We have times, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I didn't want to get too far ahead. So we covered the part about the advisory board, which would serve formally to the council on the dollars. Talked about this kind of ad hoc working group, pool of individuals that report on issues as needed. In terms of. So the airport commission and the library advisory board, two boards that are a little bit unique in that they, they function as advisor to county board of county commissioners as well as the city council. We recommend it, just or suggest that maybe from now on, unless there's real substantive ideas coming from either the counties' participation in this dialogue, or the council has any ideas, just leave those standing as they are right now. I know they also are highly valued advisors to staff relative to the airport and the library, so.
I have a clarification point. The airport meets monthly, but the library only meets quarterly, is that correct?
Right, it looks like it's a month. Our mission July and October, there are missing two months, right? That's it, just so.
Yeah. But the airport needs monthly, forgive me, I'm not.
I just was curious, because they're not the same time commitment.
Right.
Okay.
I think the airport is uniquely positioned because of the massive amount of federal dollars and what's going on particularly right now. I just looked at the list of grants that Tony is managing and financing, it's pretty stunning. So he uses that board pretty effectively to make sure that they're vetting all these things. Not to say that it's not happening at the library, but I think the level of need is probably higher, and that's why they meet as they do. Community Relations Commission is certainly a unique board. And I think Tony, I don't have the date of its establishment, but it's only been a handful years, if I remember correctly. I think the original intent was always, was well-intended in terms of things that they deal with. I think what, I don't participate on the commission, I've been to it a few times. I think there's always a desire for a larger net cast on the issues that they're seeing out there that need to be addressed, than our jurisdictional boundaries really provide the opportunity for them to deal with. So the idea here would be to maybe rethink the commission with the community and cast it larger net and maybe bring in some of the other organizations or local governments to participate, have their own appointees, and have it be more of a community-wide commission as opposed to the city-designated mission, which for the city largely should be city jurisdictional issues. And I think from time to time, we've seen it be of interest to be a larger discussion. So while we didn't go real deep on that one, it felt like it was a thing that's put out there, have a conversation about it, and see what the thoughts are there. You know, what's a little tricky is, while all the boards and commissions, particularly in the advisory category, have been notified of this discussion, we made it very clear that there's been no decisions made. This is only dialogue about, you know, moving into the future, given the things that we're trying to accomplish. So CRC is aware of this, as is the other advisory boards.
Kevin, if I may, just to, CRC, understanding that sometimes the public who's listening, jurisdictional boundaries, and what does that mean? And so just to be a little bit of, you know, clarity, I think we've met with the CRC, there's been a desire to talk about educational issues, which fall within the school district, which is not really a city issue. And we don't really have any control or ability. which is not really a city issue, and we don't really have any control or ability to discuss the reasons and the thoughts about why some school policies may be instituted, where they've talked about maybe some things at businesses. And, you know, how does that react or reflect? Well, that doesn't really, again, jurisdictionally fall within the city. So when we talk about jurisdictional items, we're really talking about some of our partner organizations, the county per se as well, Fort Lewis College, areas that all have a major impact in our community that we normally don't have the ability to control or implement some of the policies that they have, that they're doing internally for their structured uses. So the CRC looking at maybe partnering with those organizations and others that may be out there. They'd say, yeah, everybody maybe brings one or two people in and they appoint so that the Community Relations Commission would be able to talk about issues from a different perspective in different jurisdictions and have the ability to have some of that information to get a little bit more of that process of why. Whereas a city, you know, we're, we're looking at our, our departments and our organizations that don't normally have some of the questions or have the answers to some of the questions that they've been asked.
Are there any questions on the CRC? I think you, you just provided a few examples, the city, the county, Fort Lewis. You could look at nine R, you could look at the chamber, you could explore it with, I imagine, a few other entities.
Absolutely.
Okay, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, it's kind of formed, formatted similar to the other advisory boards. The purpose is entirely probably different. I mean, we really want to introduce youth in the community to local government, what we do. And there's probably a variety of ways to do that, that is outside of a regular standing meeting. In fact, we've had youth appointments on the, the advisory boards for years. Certainly an offshoot of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. But could you do it differently so it's not a situation where month or every quarter, you know, setting up agendas holding meetings and holding minutes and doing appointments and those types of things? So worthy of some additional thought in terms of how you'd like to proceed. But I think streamlining, but keeping the kids engaged and involved. I think the high school does a nice job of having their student reps come and report out. But that's just a couple of kids, and I know we want to cast a broader net with the youth. So certainly, the committee didn't talk about this a whole lot, but wouldn't never suggest abandoning a pretty strong role for youth in our processes. So obviously could use some work, but a thought there. And then Board of Ethics was the other one on the advisory group and certainly leaned on Dirk Affaramont on this one, but the idea that you could probably get to the same outcome using an appointee, whether it's an attorney, a judge, and I don't know, Dirk, do you have any more clarity on that? Rather than having an appointed board from, from the council, because in fact, if it's an appointed board from council, then council is the one that are under review by the Board of Ethics. It's maybe a little bit tricky in a situation for the board members. So the idea is kind of revisit that, and then you wouldn't have, I know they don't meet regularly. Maybe they're a little bit like the Board of Justment, but there was a thought there that maybe we do it a little bit. We did not spend really any time on the other boards and commissions that are very unique and also the more collaborative with other organizations. In fact, we may just be pointed members to other boards. And, you know, the bid board and the community corrections board, the elections board. And then there are all very specific purpose boards and or commissions, so we really kind of steered clear of that. So maybe, maybe we can stop there because that's kind of an overview work that the committee did. As I did say, there are some questions that are out here that we can circle, circle back on or they can be asked of us and see what we can do to help address them. But certainly, general observations or other thoughts, welcome at this point.
Let me start, and I think I'd probably speak for council, but they'll have their own chance. So I thank you for your work. We, we gave you the, the challenge to not have to, you know, have a clean slate and your recommendation, so I appreciate the added responsibility you took on and to your work to, to think about this and to design it. And I also want to say, my own view is that it's really important for citizen input. It's also very important though that counselors then provide that direction and, and have that engagement. And sometimes with this number, it's very difficult. And we've seen a, as a council, not, not just this council, but our previous council, they're dropping off of those kind of monthly interactions. I think COVID kind of contributed to that, but it's also, it's important that any involvement be meaningful and judicious with people's time. I'd like to open it up for questions, thoughts on the different proposals.
First, that was very helpful seeing this, Kevin, because it definitely was like, whoa, like just with our quasi judicial and legal joint work, we need more wonderful communities just of those in general. And so that was good, but I guess I was assuming everyone had input on it. And so I just, like, do you, for you, Sarah, see any, like, issue with going to not having monthly meetings? Like, do you meet them? Do you, is it helpful for you and your staff, like, they need progress? Or do you see this, the ad hoc boards or the advisory working groups or whatever you want to call them, as a benefit?
So I can start off by saying there's probably more of the details. Once, if we go this way in direction, how, how does an ad hoc board get established? And at what level is it a council? Do we need to talk about this issue? Does it come from staff? Or maybe it's a little bit of both? So I think there's some of that discussion that still needs to occur. But I'll say, you know, the current board makeups that I, I work with, I probably spent twenty, twenty-five percent of my work-life addressing board stuff. So being able to go to this sort of format where we have an issue in the community, I think would be helpful versus, you know, we'll have a board meeting and then the next month we'll continue talking about the same thing. So we have a continuation of discussion on, you know, same topics and a lot of discussion that kind of happened routinely, so it'll happen one year and three years later, we're talking about the same thing.
Did you have a board similar to this?
Fruda, yeah. We, in Fruda, we had a Parks and Recreation Board, Advisory Board, and then we had an Arts and Culture. And then we also had a Fruda Youth Action Council, but that was actually not a council board. That was actually just a Parks and Rec board. That's how we maintained our youth engagement. We did have some council come to those. Those two boards are what we had in the city of Fruda, and we had similar discussions. We would go over budgets and things like that annually. But we also kept our discussions very high level. We didn't get into the, to the weeds a lot. It was very much, hey, we have this idea for the community. We'll present it, we'll share it with them, and then we'll get feedback and it's thumbs up, thumbs down, we go. So that's kind of how we did it.
We did, we had a lot of conversation about that in the committee. I think there's a lot of value in the board to vetting certain projects and having a perspective that's not staff, that's not council, that's community members. And I think we kind of settled on the fact that this ad hoc structure could address that. That folks that are interested in the topic, knowledgeable perhaps, and give us an opportunity for that.
Good case example is the e-bike discussion. We had three boards participating in that conversation. If we had an ad hoc board created, and maybe it's a board that stays around for, you know, a while until we get the issue resolved. But yeah, it might provide a little clarity and a little bit better direction versus having to bring three boards together for a joint board meeting, go back to boards and do an American.
We did want to leave it fairly flexible in terms of organizing ad hoc groups, but they could be, like Trey said, the terms could be longer if the project required that. Set for a very specific progress of the project and then follow.
With the creation, but if you're following your recommendation one, you would have an, an entity that is appointed by the council that looks at the finances.
Right.
So, I think so. And then you have your working group, which is around a specific issue, pickleball, e-bikes.
The Creative Economy Commission is relatively, it's only a couple of years old. That's an offshoot of the plan that was developed a number of years ago. And that's the one advisory board that community development manages. One thing that's of significant value on that board, aside from just the general work, is I think they're really helping set framework for the, the Creative District and their establishment. Because the Creative District is just trying to get their feet on the ground. And there's some board membership across both of those organizations. So it has been valuable in that regard, and we've heard the TCD express support for the work of CEC and they really, again, do help guide the TCD in their efforts.
Other questions? Several years ago, I was on a parking working group, and I really liked how that functioned. It didn't have anything to do with council, actually anything to do with the. It was essentially brought together to talk about what might change, what would be good changes in the parking in general. And we worked, like, I think for four months, but pretty consistently. It wasn't just once a month, and then that project was done. And I, I found that personally very helpful. And then I also felt like people who were involved in that were also kind of like on a list of, you know, if there was something else that you had an interest in or some experience or whatever, an expertise in, you were already on, kind of on the list to be called in if, to see if you were interested in a different working group. And I, I found that very productive. And I don't know if staff, but Vicki, you've been the greatest, the lead for that.
Well, and we did the same concept with the sustainability plan that was just adopted not that long ago where it was understood as a working group, that they came together and dealt with the sustainability plan. And then actually, they actually participated in conversations of sustainability issues on their working group. But then the committee dissolved after the plan was done, and that worked well. We've, the community development department has done that from time to time with a variety of projects over the years, fairly successful.
What was the other group, the Nexus group, with the housing and the, can't remember the other half of it?
Well, it was, it was, it was a retail linkage fee Nexus group.
Yeah.
We were looking at whether new big retailers should help participate in either transportation home. And we had a contracted service with an engineering firm that did this type of work. But we had a working group, in fact, can you participate on that?
Yes, exactly.
And now, again, term limited, time limited, term limited.
Exactly.
And, you know, I think there's a wide variety of approaches we can take here that staff could take the lead on a lot of this, but council feels that the issue is enough significant, they could certainly be the ones appointing or selecting these people from the pool. So it's not like just some hard and fast that we're thinking as a committee. I think we put it out there as a starting point for the conversation.
Can we take these one at a time, maybe, and just get a sense that we've, how we're feeling that we were kind of talking about this first one?
I mean, the sections?
Yeah, then, well, I was just trying to, you had five different kind of recommendations. The combining of one, keeping the airport and library the same. So I just really, the suggestion of expanding, expanding the involvement of the CRC to other my, my act in Florida topics. I just wondered if, if we can provide direction to you in some way that's efficient by breaking it up in these. Are there any ones that seem, I'll throw library out. It seems like airport and library, there may be consensus that you're not recommending any change. And I'm wanting to see if anyone else is, is recommending some change on that. Okay, so that's one we could kind of say we, we support. Does anyone want to bring another one up to the table, or shall I just call it some?
Well, the other boards and commissions, like the fireman board and the new ones, they also recommended any changes.
Right, yeah, so, yeah.
Get consensus on that.
Yeah, I was just trying to address the, by the Kevin.
Well, so.
Yeah.
You mean the other city boards? Okay, the other boards and commissions, then we're done with that.
Okay, so that's, that's a good point. So did anyone have any changes to any of the other boards and commissions that Kevin did not identify in this particular discussion? I don't have any.
I think what I was trying to do is do the easy ones first.
Okay.
Just skip that one. Because I feel the same way about the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission.
Yeah.
If Ben is, if he's comfortable with how that's all working and the mayor currently is, how I'm quite liking that process.
I actually haven't, I haven't been here for a meeting. I think it was.
It'll start in September.
It'll start in September. So I was actually going to ask the previous mayor, your experience with that, and if you also had thoughts of expanding the reach.
Well, Melissa's experience was different than mine because the board, the commission changed.
And didn't she recruit it?
Were you meeting?
Yeah, we were meeting.
Oh, you were meeting, okay. On Zoom?
Yes, and then we also met in person after, so, yeah. But ours was more the youth, just like the youth took on projects. And like, how can we contribute to the community and where do we want to go? It wasn't so much like the mayor saying, you know, here's what council wants you to do. It was youth-driven. Teaching them to create and then engage and complete projects, that, that kind of been what he saw?
Yeah.
Was he thinking pizza?
Yeah, lots of happy, happy's. And, you know, them developing their own ideas for projects they want to work on. Really kind of working within our group, and I think there's probably opportunities to expand beyond it. But coming out of COVID, it seems like it's working okay for now, certainly always with.
So we think that keeping the, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council as it is makes sense.
I would support it too. I think it's really valuable for the students.
Okay, yeah.
And I, I, as mayor, I enjoy serving on it each month and really getting to know the students well. And it was definitely student-driven for projects, and I felt, I felt like it was very advantageous for several.
My kid was part of that commission, and I think yours are too.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
I think positive, positive feedback, and I think Ben, great job. When, when you were the mayor, mayor council director, you attended some of them, so that was good.
Okay, good, all right, that's good. Okay, so any other easy ones on the list?
Well, I don't know if we want to get the conversation about the regulatory and quasi, versus quasi judicial with the planning commission delay.
Oh, yeah.
So Kevin, what you said to us is, you laid out some pros and cons in that one. Particularly that the planning commission looks at a lot of issues versus the design of a review board has theory, specific scope.
And the technical expertise on those boards is unique as well.
So thoughts on what staff should be thinking about combining, keeping them separate?
What?
Joint, some occasional joint meetings?
That, absolutely. And we did, I think we had on, once it was last summer, we did PC, DRV, and that was super effective, and we're planning to do that again at some point this year. Staff will need to review the codes. We'll need to really have a good look at, you know, where they're impacting the code of these two boards and commissions. I think the issue of the technical expertise is important too. And I, you know, the, the thing about, I will tell you, we're busy as ever in terms of development review, so that means both of those boards are super busy. I think we got out of the planning commission at nine thirty at night. And that's not particularly late in context to some of the meetings we've had here from time to time. But, you know, for our meeting to discuss planning topics is a lot. So if you would add on another, essentially another board's work, I'm not sure how that works unless you start having multiple meetings a month, or we start really looking at the code in terms of changes that affect those things that are currently being reviewed. You know, the 2014 land use code revision really did actually streamline to some level the, the review processes. But there's, it's still, as you know, a very time-consuming lot of specificity in all of those codes, and the planning commission's doing work, or the DRV is doing the work. So I think we're very open to the idea of what can we do to, if there's an opportunity to either combine or do something a little differently, we would like to look at that. But I would ask for some time for staff to do that because that hasn't happened yet. But if there's interest on the part of the council for us to do that, we would continue to develop with that and report out as, you know, as we get some findings to share.
So you're, one of the challenges that was coming about had to do with the timeline of who they went to, who the developers went to first, planning commission or DRV. And I believe that you switched that because what was happening was they would go to one and then the other one would say no, and it would have to go back to the other.
The sequencing, I would have to read on staff probably if I'm still back there. But in terms of, you're right about the fact that, you know, you could end up in a situation where you have planning commission, DRV, and the city council involved in a project. That's, that's five unique individuals.
And the HR and the historic board too.
Potentially, potentially, and, you know, that, that. Potentially, potentially, you know, that, that is a quite a circuit.
It's circuitous, yeah.
Right.
I'm not even going to try to say it, but it is a challenging load for applicants to.
Well, and one of our goals, I think, is to create a more streamlined, effective, efficient process for going through planning and development. And that would be the reason why I would want to see if there was something that could be done to make it, the experience of the person going through the process. Not that we want to lower our standards or anything like that, but that experience so that the time doesn't take me much, the cost, the, it's not just our time. It's also our community time. So that would be the only thing that I would, at this point, because I agree with you, I think the skill sets are very different on all three of those groups. But I, I'm wondering if there isn't a process that might help for streamlining how people get projects approved or know early enough before they spend tons of money that it's not going to work. So I know that's the biggest complaints I hear.
So I think what you're sharing is consistent with that, what was written up and I desire to continue to evaluate whether we can prove the process on that.
So would you be willing to like commit to coming back to us with, with, with some suggestions or no?
Yeah.
Best way it can be and that's how it stays, I think that's possible too.
I will tell you that was the discussion the staff, particularly this week, earlier this week and last week was the idea that we'll sit down after this meeting that we're having right now and start talking about what it might look like. And I also committed to them that they would be the ones providing the good feedback as to where the pitfalls are, how we might be able to prove it. And that that would come forth for discussion at a later day.
And you involve the actual commissions in that? Let them say why, why, what they see as improvements to simplify or shorten the process.
Yeah, you know, we have a total one working group, which is an ad hoc group.
Yeah.
And bouncing ideas about code revisions is what they do. That doesn't mean we couldn't have a different look with a different group relative to this issue. That's certainly easy enough process to undertake. And in fact, that would contend steps, I'd be talking to them about what it might.
I'm curious, if you, Tori, you spent 25% of your time staffing two boards. Kevin, you've got a variety of staff, but what ballpark percentage time would you see that is involved?
Well, if you, we have, I think I counted five, that's five unique staff, at least five. And then the admin staff has to deal with all five of those commissions. And it, it chews up significantly amount of time, particularly if you go planning commission. You might have five planners submitting five or eight unique projects to one month's meeting. That all comes into an admin staff or even two admin staff. There's also the issue where you have to load these things all into our enterprise system, which is our internal management tool, so we can get these agendas on board. So it's not just a matter of somebody taking a bunch of papers, stacking them up, photocopying. It's very time consuming.
I respect it.
So I can't give you a percentage. For admin, I would say that I will throw it, it's, it's probably pushing half of their time, you know, and that's two people.
But we can't get rid of a.
No.
No, you can't get rid of a planning commission.
So, so it's more about how do you, within your own department, change that if you can. But that's not the question that we're asking here.
I'm just looking at streamlining again, these are things that can, because I recognize that to have these, this input takes, and it's in some ways required, takes a lot of time.
Only process improvement certainly, certainly since Jose's gotten here has been a kind of a prevailing theme. But we've been at this even before that in terms of modifications. I mean, like I said, the 2014 code was far improved in terms of streamlining, but it's still a long way to go. So we're, we're committed to do it. I, I won't tell you I'm coming back in four weeks.
Yeah.
Because we won't be there, but we certainly make the commitment to, to start into the process.
What does council think of that?
I think I would absolutely support your continued review of this as I look at what the other communities are doing. You know, they don't, very few of them have three, the board of adjustment designer you're doing during the planning commission or the planning commission. A lot of them just have two. And some of them just have like board of adjustment and planning commission or, or historic preservation and planning commission, you know? So if there's a way for you to consolidate, I sure think, I mean, that's a more of a staff issue certainly than a council issue, but your time is valuable. And so I absolutely support you trying to consolidate that in a better, more effective, efficient way for staff. And also, like Emma's saying, people trying to get this through the process.
Jessica, Olivia, any thoughts on that one?
Yeah, I agree to have them evaluate, figure out how to streamline it.
Yeah, I, I think it needs outreach to the board and commissions as well as maybe developers. Because some of these projects should not be taken up so much of your time. So if the code is clear, the language is clear, and a project, even though it's a big project, meets all the requirements, it should be, during the discussion, it should be, this is the code.
Staff has been discussing, started, we restarted the design awards, which doesn't sound, seem like much, but it does engage our development community in a positive manner. We also, Savannah right now is talking about starting an educational series where like once a month we would host a movie and have panelists that relate to not the, you know, the bureaucracy of what we do, but the value of good community participation in the development process. And, and an offshoot of that is also just getting, getting together with a larger group of the development community in a more consistent basis. Not just the planning staff, but the engineering staff as well, to really just kind of do coffee and talk about global issues, not project specific issues. So I think there's something here in terms of what you just referenced, in terms of getting, getting more feedback from those boards and commissions and engaging them more. So it doesn't feel like us versus them, we're partners and what's going on. And I think we have made great strides in that regard in the last couple of years and we'll continue to do so.
So I think you've got, and I also support you coming back with ideas on streamlining. I think that would be clear too.
I think we're down to board of ethics, CRC and then the big group.
So I'll, I'll jump in with the CRC to start with. I welcome the idea of expanding the board to other entities. I think, you know, in my conversations with them, they're struggling with the same issues. And so potentially you would have like maybe five different entities having their own board. And often to your point, the issue that may arise, while it isn't necessarily in the city's jurisdiction, you can't also say, oh, you, or we're not going to just look at it, but you have to also have to recognize that it's not within the jurisdiction, have no influence here. So I think exploring with other entities, if they would be interested in some kind of community wide board would be really helpful. And, you know, and I see Jack here and I actually do bring in the, the private sector, possibly even bid, because I, I know that there have been issues around that as well. So, you know, the obvious are the nine R, the, the college, county, possibly bid, possibly the chamber, possibly visit Durango. I think you could think of who all might need to be involved. Is there support for that?
Well, I don't, I, you used the word expand before.
Nice, yeah, yeah.
And I don't know if that's, when Jose was kind of talking about engaging the larger community, that wasn't my exact imagining of it. So like, I didn't see taking our board and adding all those groups to it. I, I more saw having those groups and then the city has a representative that is on a community relations commission, if you want to call it that. And then I could see like the people who currently do this as being maybe one of those ad hoc working groups, working on specific things with that more community based concept.
I think I did quite say each entity would appoint their person or interview, appoint their person. Yeah, I, I wasn't clear. So if we're in alignment there, is there other thought on that?
Yeah, and hopefully there would be more community wide support for that type of, but I would, I would, I would support reaching out and, 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 and if there is, and pursuing that.
I know nine R had a specifically, maybe it was about a year ago, they were thinking of making their own kind of DEI group. So I think that there would be a natural ability to partner right off the bat there. I know I've had conversations with some consultants in regards to Fort Lewis playing a major part and making sure that their students also are a major part of our community and that they're feeling welcomed as well. So I think there is some absolute interest in being able to do this and doing it to where, I think as, as councilor, you were saying, that it's not one entity having to take on all of it. But it's all each entity working together, being able to partner through it, I think makes a lot of sense.
Great, so we have direction there. Can we discuss the board of ethics next and then take the six headed one at the very end today? Sorry. You know, I, I'm going to, I've been trying to reframe, but I'm going to actually jump in first on this one. I have, I had a little experience with the board of ethics and I, first of all, I want to thank them for their work. But I'd also like to say that, you know, and I've had this conversation with Dirk in my own case, when I had an ethics claim filed against me. I felt as though that probably could have been resolved, one, with a conversation that required two people, the person making the complaint and the person having the complaint made. That could have been resolved by one, asking, have you two talked to each other? And two, I think in my case, which was found to be groundless, it could have been resolved with a phone call to the city attorney, which is what constitutes confidential. Or it could have been resolved with a, as a phone call to the city manager, was this a confidential information? Instead, it took months and over $10,000. And so I am very much aware of the value in having an opportunity to make a complaint. I do worry about it being weaponized and, and I have shared that with a, in a formal document to the board of ethics. So I would like to say that I think from my own experience, I have thought about the value of having an ombuds person or a judge or something as a preliminary or possibly, you know, as the, I don't want the quite, the correct term, maybe the arbitrator or the mediator in, in this situation. But while I appreciate the board, I also feel as though in my own case, having it go on for months was probably unnecessary. That's all I have to say about that.
So I believe Dirk, that at one point, the board of ethics was going to come to council and discuss some suggestions that they might have for revamping the, the board. In, since that time and since it hasn't happened, I've also heard what you've had to say. And I, I would really like to know, like, what do other communities do? And what, not just cities, but like, what do entities do that have conflicts? Like what do boards, significant boards do? That, when they have conflicts like that, do they, do they do have an ombudsman or a judge? Because that seems to make a lot more sense to me. I was really concerned during your situation when the fact that city council had appointed the boards and here they are making recommendations about a city council situation. I, I found that to be a highly conflicted interest situation and I wasn't sure how to get us out of that. And then consequently it happened again, we had another city councillor in the situation with the board of ethics complaint and more than one. And it just doesn't seem appropriate to me. It seems out of whack. So I would definitely be interested in how can we do it in a completely different way?
Well, no, no other community here has a board of ethics.
Essentially fairly rare for a city of our size to have a board of ethics as we do. A lot of them rely, I can't say that I've done, I wrote research on this with larger cities, often have, you throw board, board, the, the analyst, I'm sure something like that. So the POE is meeting actually Thursday. I have a special about this with the T2 on Thursday. I have the request, I have the number of proposed changes to the code less focused on the board itself than on the code. So I did sort of bring it up, you know, I'll take that meeting first and expect that we can do some research on what other similarly situated cities do.
And I would go beyond cities because as you said, most cities don't have this, I don't know that that's true for us. And the idea of breaking down all the, the mold that we currently have to change, I think we need to look at breaking that mold in this case also.
And I would add in higher education and ombuds person is quite common. And they often are the, they also can be, when you have a complaint and stuff like that, but it can also serve in some cases as the whistleblower. The opportunity for a whistleblower to speak without fear of retribution, things like that. So that's a common method in higher education. Thoughts on giving direction on the board of ethics, especially knowing that Dirk is going into a meeting? Or do you support what's being discussed?
I support it. So we're going to, going to look into what other communities are doing.
I think if I understand it, we're looking at what other communities are doing, possibly breaking the mold in the sense of, does it make sense to have a judge on contract or something like that?
I appreciate it, Steph's recommendation, yeah. I support community discussions towards that direction.
And I do feel we should make some recommendations also of other changes to the code that could impact how it operates. And this is not an issue that's.
Okay. So further discussion like at a future study session?
I think Dirk's going to provide some of our suggestions, if I'm hearing it correctly, which was what kind, what staff provided, which was to consider a, what did you say here, a judge?
Judge, yeah.
Or attorney.
Yep.
Or an attorney.
Or attorney, yeah.
And then looking at, so looking at that, looking at what others do and certainly willingness to hear changes to the code, to that process. But I think your direction is a little bit broader than just the code.
And the intent was to schedule a study session between the VOA and council, so that it's something that.
Okay, so further discussion later.
With some specific examples to pursue. Okay, so then, now we're at the recommendation of combining, I've got it in my head, right? Parks and Rec, open space, multimodal, IAB, self fab and the creative economy commission, correct?
I don't know if there was a recommendation to combine them. I think it had to do with time coming into working groups.
To essentially, as written here, is you would dissolve those, but you would have.
Yeah, you said combine them. Oh.
Yeah, my, right, my, right, okay, great. I got what you were saying, yeah.
Yeah.
So dissolve them and create one, create one.
Create a group of, it could be all these board members or other people. And I guess there's still work to be done to determine exactly how this would play out. But the idea would be we draw on a rule of interested residents to participate in the issues as they're needed. And then they work through the issue, it's bikes, like we mentioned before. And then when the issue was taken care of, that group ends meeting.
So we would create one board, which may be comprised of a combination of.
But we have one board for the expenditure of the 2005, 15 and 2019 sales tax. You do have a board for that.
Yeah, but this other group of six, there would be no board. It would just be, you'd just call on folks if you need them.
Like a list of citizens potentially and they would support the financial oversight too.
Yeah.
I find that very concerning, I guess is the right word. I think which boards were there? Can you just tell me?
I'll say.
Yeah, because I, I, I value, I extremely value the input of every of these boards to infrastructure advisory role on the grid. I think that is why councils has a board to get that first screening of feedback and evaluation of recommendations that represent a community with staff. So I, I think there only, so that there's several that are very distinct that I think you cannot just. If you have a group of 30 people and you have an issue, assume you're going to say who's interested and then maybe that person doesn't show up and then you don't have a consensus or you have a change of. I think practically it's very difficult to make that work on top of the fact that you have very distinct groups, like multimodal represents different groups in our community. I, I think there is efficiencies to be made, but not by dissolving and have a big group of people, but maybe by. The only ones that might work would be multimodal and national lands and parks and rec, but even then they have conflict of interest.
Sort of clarified, correct me if I'm wrong, so let's say we have, we want a sewer to study our water rates or whatever it is. And council decides that we want, you know. and council decides that we want, you know, a study on that and like, we could do an ad hoc group that gets together and commits to three months, I don't know how long it took the IAB to do that or whatever, two months of like weekly meetings of seven people to go through and do exactly what the IAB did, but just for that one topic.
That's, that was, that was the idea and whether it was a staff-driven effort to create the ad hoc or whether it was council who kind of didn't speak to that.
Sure.
Uh, but the idea would be, yes, you'd call on those seven people to work with you till you get through the project.
And, and so when I was looking at this and envisioning it, you have the, the money board, tax money board, right? So if they have, like, we need to spend some of the tax money on, let's say, e-bikes, because that was a huge deal. They could call for like a ad hoc group that specializes in e-bikes to give them.
And then you bring that recommendation of expenditure to council-appointed financial oversight.
The interesting thing about that one though, is that's not really a 2005 or a 2015. It asks a question, no, I know, but so I think, I think this is really good when you align it. Because in reality, then that question, we don't, that question comes through staff and not through the boards because it's not about those.
Or from us, so when we put it through the new topics, like we get a million emails about e-bikes or pickleball, right? It comes to us and we say, Tony, we want more information on this and he does the, the special group, the working group. I just see so much efficiency in that really. So now I'm, I'm torn because I do do, I, I don't know much about like all the boards obviously, but like the Creative Economy Commission. There's things we work on every month. We get grants through every month, but we, like, but we talk about the same thing a lot every month too. And so, and it's kind of repetitive and, um, and so I see like the positives and negatives. I also see how staff can handle a lot of it and then staff could direct or council could direct depending on the emails that we get for ad hoc groups. And I see a lot of efficiency, I feel like, and really focusing to think about the e-bike conversation and how long it's taken and how many different groups have a hand in it. And you think of like a year ago, we had like a group work for three months and really like dive in and like do it, it might be done. Might, it might still be done.
So I just, I, I'm hearing your concern. We would have one, you're proposing one board that handles all of the tax-directed funds. That's the, the board that council would appoint. And it could be comprised of a couple of people from the different existing boards or whatever, or new, or a whole new thinking. So one board takes care of the, that would be the 2005, the 2015, the 2019 for sales tax. All right, so just thinking about that.
And then there would be working to.
Then there would be the working groups. So my, my concern in this is where does the public input come from?
So currently, when we have an advisory board, we have, the public is invited, there's public comment and all of that. With working groups, I don't know that if there's a structure for that or not. Or does that happen when that conversation comes to the, to the financial oversight board? But what about things that aren't part of the financial oversight board? So where does the public input come from?
I would tell you, we talked a little bit about that and I would say that council's going to see a lot more folks at the dais.
That's just thinking.
Because staff certainly tours and, um, and everybody here is willing to talk to anybody who wants to talk about anything but when we can't talk about issues. That might not feel like the venue that they want to be heard at. So there is benefits when you have boards because it's a formal group, taking minutes, someone steps forward and it's a fairly free-flowing conversation in most cases. If you're heard, um, I think you will see an uptick in folks coming to the dais.
And that can be a good thing.
Yeah, that's a good thing. I don't know everyone that comes forward.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessarily about that.
Yeah, I.
I, maybe as an, if I think this through a little bit more, if you have a big pool of people and they have a topic come up and it's like-minded people and then you establish a smaller group, let's say pickleball board, and you have them address it. Now let's take 20 different projects back to back that are all recreational calls. And you have the same group going through the meeting, but still on a monthly basis, you're gonna end up with the same structure.
I don't think all of them need ad hoc boards. I think staff can handle the majority of things. I mean, no offense, and again, I don't know all the boards, but like Creative Economy Commission, like, I feel confident that Tony can handle a lot of the items that are brought forward without ad hoc boards. Bigger things that we see, the pickleball boards or the e-bikes.
What staff does have.
Water rates.
Yeah. My lens is that the, uh, council setting policy and adopting very specific plans with strategic plan, comp plan or all these sort of plans that they're talking about, mobile plans, forestry management, that's all those plans are the guiding documents for staff to do operational issues. So, uh, I feel like we have a marching horse to some degree that, that should allow us to do the weeds stuff without necessarily public participation in the conversation. But what we're gonna need is a sensitivity barometer to know when you need to pull the public or not. I mean, and then I think we have a good staff that has that sensitivity to do just that.
One of the things that you haven't talked about recently in like the last five minutes is all the time the council puts into appointing board members, meeting with them and everything else that goes on. I mean, we have been appointing board members continuously for years because we can't get all the boards filled and then things change. So this is one of the reasons why in my, my memo and my questions that I brought up was like, what form of government do some of these other cities have who have boards? Because if, if it's a situation where councillors are paid a full-time wage, then maybe them spending time, appointing board members and doing all that is reasonable. But that isn't the structure of our current government. And so you're, you are asking people who don't necessarily, I mean, they're doing this all out of the goodness of their heart. They're taking their time, you guys, I'm talking about us, we're taking our time and study and coming to the table informed and doing what we can. But not everyone can spend 40 or 50 hours a week doing these things. And it, it would be different if we were, if we had a different job, right? So I think that one of the benefits of having this kind of a conversation and moving in this direction is it actually balances what, what the requirements are for council with what our actual responsibilities and what we get paid and all of that are. So I'm totally supportive of going in this direction, seeing how it works. And if it needs to be modified or maybe there's one group that, oh no, this absolutely isn't going to work that way. We've got to have a specific advisory board for that. Right, but I'm, I'm all for heading in this direction and testing them or something. I think you've done great work. I think you brought forward a good idea there, so.
I agree. Seeing the disparity between like-sized communities and their boards and the rest, it was like, whoa, like something. And then staff time, like if we were to take line up, what, you know, bills like a, like a lawyer does and the time it takes you to manage the board and you to man, like how much would we be spending? And not to mention our time, like Kim pointed out on going to these meetings and then appointing them and the, all the interviews, whatnot. I, if there is something where at some point it's like, no, I have to have this monthly meeting with a group of people, I hope, like if we're moving in this direction to like take away these boards, that it would come back and say, no, this is an important role for our community. And as a director, I need this board monthly, like Tony injured advocated work. Because I feel like being on that board, that he needs that position, that it's super important. And so like, whatever, like I feel like if we move in this direction, which I, I support, that's what I wanted to say, that you would, directors would feel comfortable coming back.
We'd like to do it, remember that would be also sensitive to the board, the commission members that we have and not just to have kind of a clean cut, but go like kind of have a conversation with them about some of the pros and cons and how we might evolve it. And my guess is we'll get really great feedback in terms of kind of more details we won't be putting this number up here.
I think you. First of all, I really want to thank staff for putting in the time and energy and actually come forth with, um, really a sea change of, uh, of, of, of an alternative, of a suggestion. I mean, this is, this will be a huge change in how we do business. Um, and I think that it's needed. We have hit a tipping point of, like Kim was saying, it's, it's a, we cannot, we can no longer manage 130 advisory board members. And it's also doing them a disservice. Our 10-minute interview process, it, it's inadequate, it's insufficient. And at the last, for the first time, the last quarter, I missed the interview process. And that, and I've been doing it for five years, that process, I believe, was six to eight hours. Just, just for two full day, I mean, ridiculous. So it's become completely, it's not, it's untenable. And I think then it, 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 um, it outweighs the advantages of such great public input that we get through that process. But by, by moving in the direction that staff is recommending and by looking at this type of consolidation and new approach, I think we can review it and see if we can still kind of get that public input through those types of processes with the ad hoc. I appreciate that. Stay in touch with our community. And honestly, you know, people may reach out to us more with their opinions and feedback and they may be at the dais more. I fully support that. That's, you know, I, I don't, I don't, almost don't even like the layer. I, you know, that's what we're elected to do. And I know we're basically volunteer, but that is what we're elected to do. So I, I support it and I think it's great. And I thank you guys for bringing it forward.
Appreciate that. And just a quick one, just to make sure that, you know, we still have work to do on the concept. And I want to make sure that's clear, that this is a, a concept that seems to be getting support. So staff will come back after meeting with the boards and commissions and maybe even already having some ad hoc groups that may already be created right now, some of the issues. So there's still work to be done, which is, which is great. I just want to make sure anybody who's listening doesn't think like, oh, they've made the decision and running forward. We've, we've talked about a concept that we want to continue, I think, I'm hearing right now from some of the council members will get it wrapped. But to continue to look forward through and see how it would work and get more information.
I, I want to make sure we're from Olivia and then I'd like to insert my, my thoughts. You, you mentioned earlier some concerns to you. We've heard from three councillors with a real clear sense of support for coming back with more information on this and how it would be designed. Do you have any support or opposition?
I, I think the, uh, better information is always good, but the, the boards that we're looking at pulling together, they're two, two distinct infrastructure advisory board or technical Parks and Rec. I mean, I, I think they don't match. And if you would make a big pool of people and then you select projects, because these meetings are not empty meetings, these are long meetings and they cover a whole range of topics. To me, the solution would be to see why are we spending so much time on certain topics? Maybe it should be more facilitated meeting where the direction is more clear and cut within boundaries, where people don't veer off track all the time when, when something goes on. And make sure that we're talking about like if it's code or some, but prioritization, capital improvement projects. I mean, it's, I think those things just stay.
Okay, can I just respond to Olivia?
Sure.
Because you're bringing a really, a really good comment that I actually had forgot to bring up. One of the other things that I was thinking about was that you guys, Barbara and Kim, are on a working group. And what came out of that working group was that we needed three top priority projects for each of these groups, which we talked about for at least a year, if not a year and a half, and we never were able to get there. Because even that was taking, would have taken a whole nother work session for each of these groups, which we never really got to. So at least one, so I would, but, but what Olivia's point actually, as you, to me, as you consider this, continue to consider this process, given the functions that may, you may find are different. You know, the one other option is to go to less frequent meetings. Could they meet once a quarter? If you, if you decide a group needs to stay forward, could they meet once a quarter instead of monthly? Like you're saying, they repeat things monthly, you know, over, over, could it, could it be that?
It doesn't take the responsibility off the council. No, that's, that's the other challenge with that.
Oh, yeah.
We still have 130 board members.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't keep it that way. I mean, if you were to bring, let's just say that it was determined that the Creative Economy Commission is necessary, is, is good to keep on its own because of the, that market, the, the economy that it's supporting, which is relatively new. I get, I hear, I heard that and I actually agree with that. If you decided to keep it, perhaps I don't need to meet every single month. We, we would still need to appoint them. So it does still have an impact. But if you were to do some type of consolidation, um, and, you know, that could be a consideration.
So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in because we're reaching time and I'd like to share my view, if I may, because I think we have consensus and then we can. Topic. Thank you for your work. I also would like to see your recommendations for coming back with this. I've served on three of the boards as the liaison to three of the boards that you're, uh, suggesting and I've been a volunteer on the Creative Economy Board. So I'd like to say that whatever comes back, but I think we as a council have to do our job, which is to meet with the number of groups we were meeting, at least eight board, advisory board once a month. I didn't necessarily like breakfast because I like to get things, you know, have an agenda. But we had been doing that and we've cut that down. So we don't necessarily have to do that. But we also, in my mind, have a responsibility to provide the direction to them. This is what we need you to tackle. And that means a commitment from us with whatever the structure looks like to sit down and say, okay, this is, you know, SALT Fab shouldn't have to be asking for a meeting with us to provide direction. We should be doing that. So that's where I'm trying to get to, uh, to, uh, a workable, uh, number of boards that staff can support, that addresses the, the community input, but that council can also provide the direction to and get the feedback from.
I think Kevin kind of spoke to that a little bit when you spoke about policies and, and, um, direction from council to staff. Because when you said that and then when you said that Barbara, what I realized was that really, like for the SALT Fab, SALT Fab said, we need direction from staff too, because what can staff do and what answers do staff need? And so I actually am moving my thought process to rather than council directing that, because we're already doing our strategic plan and doing policies, to having staff go, okay, where are the gaps and what do we need? And how do we do that? And then we, if we have something, as you mentioned Jessica, that we want to have brought forward and discuss, we can do that.
So I'm thinking I'm, I'm gonna wrap this up so we can move on to the homeless discussion. What I've heard with this item is support for you coming, uh, reaching out to the, your respective boards, coming back with an idea of how you may produce the overarching, um, financial direction for it. I don't have the terminology right. And then how you would look at different working groups and what you need, um, citizen input on in particular. Is that enough direction and is there any disagreement? That there's consensus on that?
It's pretty close.
Okay.
And the last one was consensus to go ahead and move forward with, uh, the CRC and meeting with other entities and beginning to develop a community CRC.
Yeah, that was already. Okay, so the next item, we're gonna switch gears. We're five minutes behind.
That's okay. We're on schedule. We actually have 10 minutes actually.
So I'm gonna give a five-minute break to get situated and then we'll be in at 4:05. Okay.
I'm gonna ask to stop this meeting in a short time because I.
Just following the agenda. Uh, we were to be done at 3:55.
First of all, the time's got to cave. I think we were a half an hour early on the last day. So it doesn't matter. I just.
Yeah. Well, I just feel like we, I'll allow too much time to me.
Move this for 4:45.
Hopefully we're done at 4:45.
Yeah.
Because we're not bringing.
I don't know why you're not waiting, right?
I don't know.
I think the, the point you brought up.
Like eight hours straight.
That's, that's what I'm thinking. You ran for office.
I'm sorry. I have no empathy.
We're getting a lot done today.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, I'm so.
The one thing we did say, I mean, and I was supportive of it, staff Tuesdays. I'm here.
Yeah, I'm here. I didn't like them, but I'm here.
Right. Like, I don't want to come back like. Me neither. I like this.
I agree too. So that's what I'm saying. It's actually better than it used to be.
A hundred percent, actually.
I mean, I.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call us back. Call us back. Okay, the audience, please. We're going back into session. No, I can have it. I can, I can gavel if I have to.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Let me just acknowledge the audience. I appreciate you coming out. We're on the topic of homelessness. I see folks have been involved in this issue in the community and I appreciate it. This will not be a, this is not a public hearing. If any way should perform, it is a discussion. So, uh, but I thank you for your interest in this topic and your work. Um, Jose, we have asked for this meeting in part to provide new counselors and the, the, those of us that are in our third year, um, with, you know, the history, current chronology, the issues of what we've been trying to achieve. I think there's also some issues that we need, um, to make certain we're all on the same page. When we talk about a managed camp, what does that look like, things along that? So I think some clarity of that when, um, we talk about, um, options, we're, we're not going to go into anything specific today. It's mostly a learning process, but, um, and eventually we do also have to discuss whether or not, uh, there's council support for, uh, any possibility of external support in this endeavor. So I want to turn it over to you with that kind of caveat. And, um, I believe we were supposed to go to four forty five. It says four thirty five. I believe we're supposed to go to four forty five.
Just an estimated to wherever the council's.
So that's, that's our goal is to end at four forty five if we can.
Okay. Uh, again, Mayor Council, thank you absolutely, uh, Mayor. That the, the premise, I guess what I'd say, the founding premise, uh, for this item was to bring, uh, the, the new counselors up to speed on some of the history, uh, that we've had with being housed, uh, as well as kind of talk a little bit, have an opportunity to do refreshers, uh, for those that have been here on the council for, uh, for some years and then also have an opportunity to answer questions. We did receive some topics. We're going to do our very best to address all of them, but, uh, also want to make sure that we leave time for questions to, to be asked. Um, you know, me coming on, I believe I started in September twenty twenty. I think this was like the second day, uh, we had a joint meeting about the, uh, the managed camper purple cliffs and, uh, what we were going to do with that. So there's been substantial portion of it, but a lot of the work was many years before I had arrived here. And Kevin has been doing a lot of that, uh, that lifting along with a lot of other staff members, some, uh, that, uh, you know, uh, would have a really good perspective. So I think Kevin's going to try to wrap all of that and provide that history. And then we'll kind of take it from there and answer questions and go through. Uh, our object, our objective really is to do educational and be able to, to answer the questions. So with that, I will pass it over to Kevin to begin to give a overview of where we started, how we've kind of, we've wandered through the path and, and where we are today and, uh, what we're looking at. And then obviously at the end I can provide kind of what we've been doing with the county and our discussions.
Take it away, Kevin.
I'll try not to go too deep because it's, uh, it's been quite a process. Uh, I'll go back to twenty fifteen, probably the stage at that time was, city and county had been dealing with dispersed camping for years. And what would happen is, um, people get moved along and then there'd be a cleanup day and we'd go clean up the woods and do it all over again. And process continued to continue. And, uh, it was about twenty fifteen where there seemed to be an uptick in downtown impacts of panhandling, uh, folks sitting in a line on sidewalks. Probably the downtown business improvement district in particulars called those, hey, we can do better than this. Get a group of people together and start talking about these issues. And it was really focused on downtown. Um, and they, there was a, a homeless coalition put together, which was a consortium of a variety of folks, organizations of the community. And, uh, really they started self-educating on, on this issue. It was a far larger issue than just, you know, why is there someone standing on the street corner asking for? And, uh, they did their report and a variety of findings in it. And, uh, uh, from that, the city did do some municipal code amendments to, um, limit or modify how people can, uh, uh, panhandle or hang out downtown. And, um, I, I can go into depth on those, but then they were met with a varied degree of either support or opposition. However, they were put in place and, uh, so from there, um, I think the continued, the coalition kept meeting, learning and talking about the homeless issue, realize it's a much bigger issue than just folks downtown. And then we started talking about how the open spaces have been impacted. And it really started evolving into a larger community conversation. Access healthcare and, and forgive me if my timing on sequence isn't perfect here. There was a lot going on for many years, but access healthcare said, hey, we'll, we'll host some informal meetings with primary stakeholders. And I bet they did that for about a part of a year, uh, where, where do we go from here? And I think it was a discussion about there should be a strategic plan developed. In the meantime, you know, the, the discussion of camps started to evolve and the sheriff's department started doing things in certain ways. And so in parallel to kind of this discussion, should we have a strategic plan on homelessness? There was also the county sheriff's office deciding maybe we're better off letting folks stay in one place rather than spreading across the landscape. And it was up behind tech center. At the same time, then this whole issue, the strategic plan came together and a larger group of people, county and city joined and funded that process. That process took, I want to say it was probably eighteen months, give or take. Um, but in the meantime, Ed Abra was doing his good work, uh, from his, his view of things and the sheriff's department's view of things, with kind of helping assist folks who were camping on the hillside behind tech center. And those numbers varied from thirty people to seventy depending on the time of the year. Uh, for what, uh, with that also came an uptick in activities in the port area and downtown. Notwithstanding the fact that we changed codes to make it a little more challenging for folks to be panhandling or, um, congregating on the sidewalks downtown. So I think that's when the camp issues really started to take a forward while the strategic plan was being developed. And, um, you know, the, the camp went from, uh, west of Tech Center Drive up on the hill or county property to east of Tech Center Drive, a piece of flat open area that was a little bit more fire safe, if you will. And that's about the same time for sixteen fire hit. And so they moved them out of, out of wooded area, off the hillside, put them on the flat area. And before sixteen fire hit, the, uh, Red Cross opens an emergency shelter at Escalante Middle School. Everybody got moved down there for summer or for several months to summer. It was open for evacuees, but the, the campers, folks who were living in the woods primarily stayed outside on the backside of the school in a fairly wooded location, just north of the school building. And, uh, so that's happening and, and the fire was, uh, controlled and, uh, contained. And Red Cross's emergency shelter wasn't needed anymore. They packed up and left and everyone went home that had a home to go to. And the folks who were camping remained behind the school. And the city at that time, um, you know, Dan Snowbird, who was superintendent at the time, said, we need some help here. Now we have, um, you know, this, uh, group of unhoused individuals essentially living on this nine hour property and that is, and we committed to. So, uh, the city at that time said, okay, we'll, uh, we'll open a temporary emergency shelter in area on what everyone refers to now as home field. Um, it was under some very tight constraints. There was a conversation with the council at that time and with, uh, uh, the attorneys who had participated in the conversation, whether the city or county, was that, um, uh, the establishment domicile and Dirk, you can correct me if I steer wrong on this, but if, if you let someone just set up camp and they're there permanent for weeks and weeks and weeks, they can claim some level of ownership over the property where they could stay there. So there was this great concern. So what the council at the time did is they said, okay, you can, you can set up your tent in the evening, take it down in the morning. And we moved, uh, thirty two people from Escalante Middle School. And I actually interviewed each one of those people and how they agreed to certain rules and sign things. And we gave them keys to, uh, uh, the, the suns. Not great, but they were essentially cleaned, uh, recycled bins with locks, pastures put on. We gave them a key, you know, they signed up. We had all that documentation. We actually hired someone to help, uh, temp firm, help kind of patrol the area up there. Uh, got it moved in and it wasn't three days later that we just had, it just wasn't working. Folks were unwilling to take down the tents. Uh, we had shouting matches, staff was getting phone calls, myself included at seven AM. Um, why are they making me take the tent down? You know, I don't feel good today. Uh, a lot of things that we should all be concerned about. Um, but needless to say, the idea of this emergency shelter with take your tent down, quit the tent up, did, it didn't work. Didn't work, uh, at all. And then the city essentially closed that to, uh, folks and, and then, uh, it gets a little bit fuzzy at that point, but I want to say they moved back into a county controlled scenario. Um, that was back up in the tech center. Um, and before it got to Purple Cliffs, uh, I think what was happening is Alavita folks were just, and the crusty folks and the, and the folks downtown really expressing concern, significant concern about the impact they were feeling because of the folks that, uh, have been really moved around a whole bunch. Um, I came to council in July of nineteen, uh, because, uh, the sheriff suggested we open up at Purple Cliffs. The city's portion of Purple Cliffs to, to, uh, essentially primitive camping. I think it's really what it was, a place where people would go and they wouldn't be asked to leave. And we talked through it with the council, but the staff position at the time was probably isn't a good location for a variety of reasons. And, uh, council tended to agree. It was approximately three weeks later, the sheriff opened up the county's side of Purple Cliffs because they had their own conversation and they decided it was the right thing to do at the time. Uh, in the meantime, the strategic plan is coming to a head and it actually was adopted by both the city and the council. Uh, and, um, and I'm going to talk about that in a moment, but, uh, so, you know, Purple Cliffs has been where it has been since twenty nineteen. I went back into the records to confirm that. Uh, and, you know, originally it was meant to be a very temporary location. Because of lack of alternatives, the county has continued to allow it to be there up until where we're at today. Uh, in the interim suing, uh, and I think this council mostly will remember the efforts to try to facilitate changes at the current Purple Cliffs where the city would take a larger, uh, role in the management up there. Ultimately, that process didn't play out, but what did happen is, uh, we have been sharing in the cost of the joint sales tax up there, but the county's been largely been the ones kind of dealing with onsite because it's a county parcel outside the city limits. Uh, but we've been providing trash. At one point we were, uh, cost sharing, but we acquired transportation services. And, uh, just prior to COVID hit, it kind of went away for a variety of reasons. Plus the ridership was really low for a couple of times a day, um, and the cost was very high. So, um, you know, you've been part of the conversation now for a couple of the years. The strap plan was adopted, I would say, in the time that the strap plan has been adopted to where we are today. Um, the implementation on that has been pretty effective. Mana is no longer a soup kitchen, if you will. They're, uh, renamed as a navigation center. And if you've been up there, you know, it's a grocery store inside. And it's a, a range of services where you come in the door and they have to sit down and they do some level of assessment. They have onsite services from access. They have some facilities you can use. You need to participate and engage with the mania folks. It's not just five o'clock dinner bell rings and you come and eat. So they've really pivoted from where they were to something much more encompassing. And that was a result of the strategic plan. And the, uh, the access, uh, steering committee turned into path group who did the plan. And now we have the, uh, the council on homelessness, which is again, kind of a consortium of all the folks. I sit on that Chuck Stevens braces, uh, there, uh, we largely meet monthly. Uh, then there's also obviously the Sparrow project, which is our city property that was, uh, essentially donated for intensive purposes for the forty unit transitional housing. You know, when that project first came to concept from Housing Solutions Southwest, um, five years ago, I think everyone said, we got this. We're going to figure this, this homeless thing, homeless this thing out because we only have thirty to seventy people. Well, in the silly years, by the time we got it open, we, uh, uh, Blue Line and Housing Solutions Southwest did put forty people in there. And, uh, essentially we know where we're at with Cliffs right now, the numbers, uh, three, four times maybe what, what it was when we first started talking about Sparrow. So Sparrow's been built on the city property. So, uh, Mana has evolved. I think we have a good community group working on the issues. Obviously it's a forefront issue for the council and for the county commissioners. So I think we've made some progress, but there's such a long way to go. The only, um, the other thing I, I might touch on really quickly is, I think it was probably seventeen when, uh, we were meeting with the county commission on a regular basis. And somebody asked me, what does the city do for homelessness? And I think a question came out of it because when all the folks were congregating or camping on the county parcel of the tech center. And, you know, I went through the budget at that time and, um, and this is, uh, and I revisited the twenty twenty budget earlier today. Just, uh, I'm going to just kind of laundry this some things that I think do impact homelessness in the community and where the city has played a role. Um, and, you know, where we've played a role over the years largely has been where we're, we can be effective and the things we're good at. So, uh, the VOA homeless shelters up on the social services camp, uh, Housing Solutions at Southwest, their facility is up there. Now we have the Sparrow also up there. Uh, we have Mana Soup Kitchen and Hilltop House up there as well. We do ongoing funding for mental health and detox services for access, detox center, youth services, uh, low income transit passes. And, you know, this isn't all directly related to homelessness, but I think in terms of the true root issues that need to be resolved for these folks, mental health and detox services are things that are probably as important as just general physical health, uh, issues which access is also part of. And, uh, we have the human services block grant through United Way, which often goes to a lot of those similar type of organizations. And again, access, Drenco Food Bank, Housing Solutions, Mana, uh, Drenco Adult Ed, Southwest Center for Independence, VOA Shelter, VOA Safe House, Women's Resource Center. So we fund those annually and, you know, that number varies obviously for budget year, budget year, but it's no small amount of money. And I, I want to say it was pushing eight hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty to combine all those things. Uh, so, you know, the city has been doing a lot of things. Uh, certainly staff time is one of those as well in terms of trying to help, uh, assist with the coalition building and participation. So that's a ten minute diatribe on my version, my view of the history of this thing. There's probably gaps in there and things that probably backfill, but.
I'd like to suggest that you add to your list, um, the VOA property out in Three Springs, for example, low income, Tamara Square, low income. The things that we do that help keep low income people. The things that we do that help keep low income people in homes rather than putting them into help. Because that's a significant contribution also. And then, of course, we have the Best Western, which will and women, yes, and we have the Best Western, which will help with that. So I think, I think if anything, that list isn't completed.
Right. I just thought it was important.
Yeah, it's great.
Remind us all of it.
And I'd love to have you distribute that list. Council on is complete because these are the kind of talking points we need. When people say the city doesn't do anything, we need to be able to let them know what we get.
Well, I'll go through this and clean it up. So it's perfected. Twenty twenty two.
Isn't that last MOU that we had with the county, which the county decided not to approve it for their standpoint of not having a closure date? We did, we had agreed to as well as also providing first response from our PD services to Purple Cliffs. Until the county was able to, the sheriff's office was able to come into Purple Cliffs to handle whatever situation it was, but we would be the first responder. So we have offered understanding that, you know, it's like, what is the city looking to do? We, you know, been a partner, been a willing partner at least since twenty twenty and tried to get through that portion. Understandably, they went, I think it was August of last year that they were going to go find their site. Fortunately, that site didn't work and we're back here. And so this is a really good opportunity as we go into our next joint meeting, which is next week, the twenty eighth, to be able to answer any questions that are still available and get into any more details that might, council maybe.
Can I ask Kevin also, you gave a pretty thorough review. But in particular, can you address the involvement around the concept of a managed camp, if you will? Some of us have met with the people from Camp Hope, Las Cruces. There's been a discussion around that. And I think we, in keeping cognizant of time, we asked for this meeting, council asked for this meeting because of the commissioner's decision to close Purple Cliffs. And what do we look at trying to achieve? What's realistic and what do we look at trying to how to address the impact of what we're already seeing from people leaving Purple Cliffs and coming into town and staying under bridges and things like that? So can you discuss the managed camp as well?
Well, the idea, the camp concept has been evolving just like this whole program has from where we were five years ago, where it was just working to go, to now it's more about we really need. It's not just self-management because they can have self-management to some level, but the overall facility or place needs to have management as well. And that's where I think Nina in particular, Donovan Bockets group also have been very vocal and we've had so many opportunities for educational opportunities in terms of what other communities are doing. But Nina in particular and their twenty twenty one site analysis, as well as their work towards Elk View have really provided the details necessary to understand what a managed camp would look like in this community for thirty to forty. And I think that's the kind of the basis for which if there's a movement towards establishing a managed camp, that is the guidance which we use. My guess is that even knowing that Mana, Nina put together a concept for managed camp for Elk View. It was in twenty twenty, quite frankly, in twenty twenty one, probably revised it a little bit. My guess is here we are in almost August of twenty two. It probably looks a little bit different. If they have a place to go and they want to establish something, I know we can't, well, purchasing policies are a little bit constrained to just say, here, go and do this on this property and we'll give you these things. But I think Nina's been the one that's really been the most participatory relative to working with the coalition individuals and expressing their interest in doing this. So there knows where I'm not exactly sure what you're looking for here, but I would say that Nina and their supporters, which includes a lot of professionals, not just volunteers in the community who want to do good things. They've done their homework and they brought in people who absolutely know this issue. And we have some community members who have taken it upon themselves to become experts in the issue. Have been participating in the development of an aid plan that will have to be modified based on the determination of the elected officials.
The question has come up, do we all have the same understanding of managed? So I guess that's where I'm trying to go to make certain, particularly for the new counselors. So that we're, is there a way right now that we could discuss from the Nina proposal and whatnot, the basic elements of what a managed facility might look like?
The twenty twenty one site analysis, that was very much an evolution of the eighteen study with Nina and the county and the city and a lot of the advocates working together. And they recommended a managed camp, which is more like for thirty or forty people. But also an alternative location, which was referenced as a primitive camp. But I think even since that time in twenty twenty one, the discussion about you can't, given what we know, what we've learned from Purple Cliffs, there has to be some degree of management of any site, if there is an alternative site beyond what I think the idea of a managed camp would be something similar to Sparrow, except it's not the building, but it's transitional. It should be transitional where you're moving people through who want to hand up and they want to get services and they want to get back the feedback on the ground, get back into a home. And we know there's people in this community, a lot of people, you know, that would fit that definition. The folks in Sparrow are in theory are supposed to fit that definition. I don't know enough details about what's going on there, but the idea is to transition through. I think the idea of the alternative, which was referenced as a primitive camp is going to be for the folks who probably aren't ready to be reintroduced into traditional society. If that's, I don't know if that's a fair way to say it or not, but, you know, where you're holding down a job, you're probably paying rent and you're carrying for yourself. And so a primitive camp, which was referenced in that report, is something a little, a little less than, you know, very structured. Let's say we got two acres, it's flat, it's got running water and proper toilets and it's got probably food service of some sort available to it or transportation to and from it, a functional shelter where it's a lot more formalized than a primitive camp is probably. It's something a far step ahead of you at Purple Cliffs because I don't think that's anything that should be a goal. There should be a higher standard for everybody to have a safer meaningful space to live. So there is a distinction between those two things. Nina's very interested in primarily the forty person, very managed with services associated with it. We would have to talk to the advocates of the community about, you know, who would take on something that's not that. Because as we know, the way the let's say the court rulings are being interpreted is that if there's nowhere for someone to go, then it's harder to enforce a camp camp in the woods behind the houses in Crestview or out in Horace College. And that's the predicament that we're in.
I'm going to open up for particularly new counselors because I look at this.
Not in here for over a year.
True, true, over a year. Melissa's been dealing with this for almost five, you and I for three.
Take it away.
So I'm going to open up for any questions that you have that, you know, because we're, in part, we wanted to get this for you to have this history.
I, the thought my position remains the same as when I was running. I think you touched upon very good points. We have prevention, mental and addiction support. Support in housing where people are about to lose their house, there's some programs for that. And then if they go into homelessness, I think we as council in the last five years, we have made very little progress in getting a primitive camp permanently set up or a managed transitional camp permanently set up. And I think that's not really speaking highly of council nor the county commissioners. That is another step of the process and then to get out of the homeless situation and back into society, the services that are needed. And most of the success stories are not from the city or the county besides cutting check. It is because of the half organizations like MAMA and Nina and the VOA. And I think there's a great organization and we just keep supporting that. And when it comes to us, we need to make a decision or, you know, find a location and make a decision and commitment to move forward with what one of the things that we have control to a certain degree, the camp site, or we haven't addressed it. And at the same time, I would still like to see updates on access, for example, what they do, even though it's county. And what the other one does for rental assistance for people that are losing, about to lose the house. But it seems that those programs work to a certain degree, but I don't know. But that would be another side discussion, I guess. So, yeah, I think we can do better as a community taking care of the homeless population because they are in the weeds.
So I heard you and my note was find a location and make a decision. What I wrote down is kind of a summary.
This is not new, yes, this is the last five years. You've been on council long.
Any other thoughts?
I mean, it's good history. We kind of knew it, most of it anyways, I feel like. It's the same. Struggle nationwide, so it's just here. Legally, what? If we have a managed camp and it's full, let's, you know, can we, like, are we still in the same situation where now? That makes sense. Like if there's not somewhere for someone to go, we can't enforce no camping.
Yeah, well, I think it's important to note that sheltering, the case we're talking about is the Boise case, I'll mention that case. It effectively said that if there's not enough places to get the shelter, then it's hard for the city to prohibit that particular public places. But it doesn't have to be the city provides the shelter, it just has to be shelter in general way. So sometimes it's that misunderstanding that it has to be a one on one, we're providing that style of case. So part of the process is going to be, and really if you look at the language in that case, it was almost a day by day, night by night analysis of whether or not there's enough room. So there may be times when there is one, sometimes when there's not. So the solution to that was, I said at that time, the Boise piece was, came out of the federal court, it's from the federal court, was to say, we will allow sheltering, because that's the language in the case, by allowing that overnight in public spaces. But you can't, otherwise by like rules, you can't have fires, you can't have guns, you can't, human waste can't be spread in the public space. But you can't make a permanent camp. You can shelter within those rules. So I think it's important to keep that distinction. So that was, that was big on opportunity that was afforded to say, look, we're going to enforce camping in downtown, along the river trail, in all of the areas that camping is forbidden. Here's an alternative. So if that answers the question, I think that that was the stance that was taken and actually still is the stance of the city at this point, my knowledge. So the existence of Purple Cliffs has been sort of the alternative or sheltering in the open space. We still don't allow people to camp in the open space that were used to set up a permanent place to stay. But that's the question, that's the situation.
So what I'd like to say is we haven't, you know, we've met with the county. And we're working there. I want to make certain that we've got some council consensus on what we value and want. And so that when we then go to the county, we've had that discussion. So the last report, and if you don't have it, Kevin can send it to folks, talked about the need for a managed camp facility. And I'm just giving you the thing that for those folks that actually want to abide by rules and want to make the transition eventually to a permanent shelter or some sort. They'd also called for, I mean, you can change the terminology, a lower barrier camp. That would be now what we know is have some form of supervision. We don't say where, we don't do anything, that's just two different camps. So my first question is, does the council, what is the council's view on that recommendation? Recognizing that we're a new council and we haven't had this consensus discussion.
And that was recommendation in the
From the plan.
So you're asking if we support a managed camp and a low barrier camp, two separate and or the same door and or maybe in the same location?
I don't have locations, but there's two different clientele you might think of.
For me, it's, I kind of look at it a little bit differently. In the sense that I think that for me, I have a priority list almost. And children are my first priority in this situation. So that means families with children. And if we can find, if we can identify a piece of property that we're willing to do a quote unquote managed camp for that population, I think we have the opportunity to keep kids engaged in school, keep them engaged in the community. They're not responsible for their circumstance and to help their families move into another situation. That's kind of my largest problem. I don't want the people who are currently living in Purple Cliffs to occupy our open space at random. I want us to have some way of designating overnight camping spots that are regulated. And I would like us to also have a completely different kind of camp, although whatever you want to call it, low barrier or whatever. That is, and this is probably going to be a little bit challenging for the county. But I think it needs to be outside the city limits for a couple of reasons. And one is right now, everything is within the city limits. And we are supporting the entire homeless population, whether or not they're city residents, meaning they live here year round and have been here for years, or they're travelers, or they're people who live in Bayfield. We are doing the full support of all of that, with the exception of Purple Cliffs. And we all know Purple Cliffs is not a good option. So I think that the county also needs to participate, not just with putting money into the project, but with actually helping manage a camp outside of the city limits. I also believe that, to your point, Councilor Bosman, some of the biggest challenges for homelessness are mental health, drug abuse, alcohol abuse. I don't think our systems to manage those are robust enough. And I think, again, the county and the state need to step up and make that happen. All the transitional housing that we've been talking about or low income housing that we've been talking about is in the city limits. The county has not provided any of that outside of the city limits. And I think that in order to be true partners in this and in order to look at it on a community wide, and I don't just mean citywide, but community wide basis, they also need to take their part in this and make that part happen. I think we have some good capabilities here for us to do this. But I'm, for me, the county putting money into the project is not enough stake in the game. They need to actually participate in a different way. And again, my priority is children, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that. I do want to try to focus on what does this council agree to? And then recognizing that we'll bring it to the county next week when we talk to them, but I appreciate that.
Well, how do you know what we're going to agree to? It's how we talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the sense of the recommendation, and you can, Councilor Beck has a good point in the prioritizing. That wasn't in the previous reports because I don't think we were dealing with it in the same way we are now. I'm seeing a school bus going to Purple Cliffs.
So some of the things that I wrote down, I agree with a lot of what Kim just said, but some of the things that I wrote down was, you know, for, I think, next steps that we're taking because we all recognize we need to take some action. I just wrote down a few things that I think that we need to get on the, on the list at some point, potentially with the county and or more discussions ourselves. Number one, location, obviously, first and foremost. Number two, we talked about it, defining what a managed camp is and means. I think more further, like really the definition of that, I'd love to see that, what works in other communities. Number three, confirming our partnership with the county, a hundred percent. It has to be well defined, written publicly and in writing. I think we need to define our partnership. I think we need to confirm funding and where it's coming from. Is it going to be more joint sales tax funding? And if so, I think we need to kind of start thinking about that funding part of it. We need to determine oversight, you know, what group is, what is going to assist us with it? Well, outside organization, how are we going to go about it? And we need to talk about public processes and engaging the community, various community organizations, businesses, you know, within the community for any location we select and any processes, just how we're engaging our community through this process. And then we talked, we've talked about this, but are we using the consultants or not? And maybe today, that's the one issue. And maybe today, that's the one issue as a council we might want to agree on before we go into our meeting on the twenty eighth. Because that's.
Yeah, no, we need to, we need to reach a decision, or not a decision, but a census on that.
Yeah, I was wondering, yeah. So all those are, yeah.
So on that note with the consultant, so and the county partnership, and they have determined there.
No, they, I don't know that they've taken a vote, just the temperature reading that Jose and I did, did not indicate any support for using, particularly following a specific land that had been proposed to us at the last meeting. There was, I think they're using manna to help with the transition that's already underway, so that transition planning. But whether or not we needed to pursue a consultant to help with an MOU, to help with the site process, again, Jose, correct me, but there was, the temperature was that it was not there among council. I do not know that they had, among commissioners, I do not believe they had an official meeting perhaps where they may have discussed it.
They did not have an official meeting, but they expressed the need that there would be some.
Okay, and I also wanted to say, what came up with that last meeting is that we had used four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars help with the strategic plan, to help with the process of NINA's, I believe some of NINA's work on site locations, possible site locations.
Services, trash, snow removal, I think all that.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought the four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that was spent by the joint sales tax on the homeless population was purely consultants.
No, no. It's all of our company services.
We just, we started it with maybe two years ago, two and a half years, with Purple Cliffs, so two and a half years.
So for the consultant, I know we went back and forth a lot in our last meeting. And, you know, I, I, I'm, if, if we think that we can solve this and move forward and move forward productively in our weekly meetings and with staff, then I'm fine doing that. I don't think that the consultant should help us with the site location at all. I think that that should be something that we handle on our own. And I know that was a significant piece of that puzzle. My desire to have a consultant involved would be after we are at a point, well, recognizing, and it may not be a consultant, recognizing that we're going to need help with managing this. I don't think this is, that we have the expertise and our staff to manage this in a city, as a city. So we'll need at some point an outside organization.
Didn't the county have an RFP to already, or in the process of getting it, or it out? They pulled it. I know, but they, but we have like a, like a star. And I think that both entities, I would think, wants that in the end. And it would be versus just like, I, I don't know with our, our process, right, of just choosing a consultant that came out with a, that would be like an RFP. Issue it, organizations, I don't know, I just feel like we have organizations on board that have helped us a ton that have been a part of the plan and have been a part of implementing parts of the plan already. And then might be a good resource to fill those parts. In addition, we don't need the land, like you were saying, for the land, the exit strategy from the camp, the county's already, or there's already, and with me, and so there's a lot of those components that were in that consultant that we've already agreed we don't need. And if we don't have county support potentially.
And Olivia, you're a great way, and I'm.
Okay, well, first, let me clarify something. There was an email from Jose, I'm going to read it out. The amount that was given at the meeting, oh, this was a response from Chuck Stevens, I guess. So the amount that was given at the meeting on consultants since two thousand and eighteen from the joint sales tax, which includes the Athena group, is four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And I think the last proposal from Project Moxie was a hundred and thirty, so if it's a hundred thousand dollars a year, in the end, I think there's two ways of looking at just purely the consult. First of all, a primitive camp, let's call it primitive managed camp and transitional managed camp. At least that's the way I use it. I think in the big picture of things, there should be one for transitional into the community for those people. And then the travelers and the people that want to live in tents away from the world, give them a place. I think both are priorities, because when Purple Cliffs goes, closes, and if they insist on that, then we have, we have a problem. I mean, I travel all over the world, just think about the United States being one of the wealthiest countries in the world, and this is the way we treat homeless people. I just think it's abnormal. And having said that, the question, the second question was consultants. Everything that's been said here is great, but it could have been a meeting from three years ago. Same, same discussion, I should, what do we do, find a location? So I think at a certain point, we have to step up to the plate and make decisions. So we can hire a consultant and push it out perfectly fine, and I understand why. But in the end, we still have the same homeless population that requires a place to live. So if we are not able, I mean, yeah.
What's your recommendation?
To have a good meeting and make decisions and put.
No, no, I mean, what's your recommendation for what to do and how to do it and where to go and the timeline and stuff? Recommendation?
I think council and, and the council and commissioners need to make a decision.
Can I suggest?
Of course we do, but I just, I just was, I was just wondering, what's your, what's your concrete recommendation?
We have a study from two thousand and eighteen, we do another study in two thousand and twenty-one about sites. It's almost identical sites, we'll throw in another five sites. If you go on Zillow, you'll find a ton of sites. The county says they, they put in, we have a lot of money available. Why don't we just downsize to pick a site for, for a primitive managed camp? So this, I, I know I'm very simplistic here in the way I approach it, but we can have these meetings and we will not make a decision. We can hire a consultant and we'll be six months further and we still don't make, until the county and the city council makes a decision.
So what's your recommendation? No, can I, can I respond? I just want to say something for the public. And I'm just keeping this very public and open, because I just want to remind the public, we had an executive session today. We can't talk about what we talked about in an executive session. But you can see on the agenda that the executive session was to talk about the possible location for lay out this land purchase, sale, agreement, acquire, whatever negotiations for a possible site. So we aren't discussing that today, and we will not discuss that. But I do want to say that, that we had that meeting. For the purposes of moving forward.
Yeah, sure. Any, any progress is progress.
The purpose of moving forward.
May I, just in the, being aware of the time, because we have to go into it. I'd like to say something, I actually don't support using more consulting fees for that, I want to be real clear. Not support, I think we've done a lot of due diligence. I think, I was very struck by, Kim, your comment at a previous session where you said, we're seeing people, they're moving into town, they're down in the under the bridges, they're, you know, and so the question, sleeping in Rotary Park in the gazebo. So the question is, and this is to your point, Olivia, is that there is some urgency to have a plan. It may not be perfect, it may not be permanent, but we, in my view, we have to be able to say, very close to this closure, here is where you could go. And how to get there with the county is the struggle. So to your point, I think as a council, yes, we have to have some options. To your point of where the location is, you know, I think that's to be determined.
But we have, but there's a, there's a middle option. The overnight camping situation is a middle option we could do right now. That we could, we could designate certain locations for that and it's structured and it's regulated. Because as people disperse from Purple Cliffs, really the only place for them to go is our open space. So instead of one area of fire danger, we will have three hundred areas of fire danger. Instead of one hygiene issue, we will have three hundred different issues. And so if, if we now proactively, before the camp is closed and as people are already moving out, give them a place to go that's an overnight camping, we can alleviate some of this pressure that we will have on our open space and the danger that that might provide to everyone. Not just the community members, but the people who would be camping out there. That's something we can do right now while we continue. Which site? What goes there? When does it happen? It's, it's, it's active movement on this issue.
So, so then the question is, and I actually would say I agree with you that we, there is this urgency. How does councils to making that decision? What do we expect and need to reach that decision if, with, not only for ourselves, but with the county?
Well, so the, the city manager has the authority to, to designate those spaces. It, it, it's not us, making us voting on something. The city manager, according to ordinance, can designate those spaces at this point in time.
I think you asked a really important question. What do you need? Because, and I I have to turn to Kevin, because we've done this before. And what year was it, twenty eighteen? Was it twenty eighteen when we did this? Okay, and so it was a really tough, tough time, because the, you know, forcing people to take their tents down every day. Number one, it requires management, it requires staffs, Kevin was there every morning, if I recall. But pretty, you know, it requires staff, it requires, it requires, or, or, or community involvement that has to be designated. Because honestly, I don't think that staff is, city staff is necessarily the right appointee. This should be well thought out. It requires enforcement and we, we would need help. But if there, if, if, if we can turn to community organizers who can help us through that process, I'd be willing to have that discussion. But that requires enforcement and from, in the past, it was extremely difficult, because we ran into a lot of problems forcing people to take their tents down every day.
Especially in winter.
Very, very hard.
We're hoping that by, we're not doing this in the winter. That's the whole point of this, is to get to a point where we actually have a designated spot, not just overnight camping.
I, I think there's a lot of, I would.
So we've, we've been having those conversations. We've had it with P D, with Dirk and with Kevin about a designated spot, knowing that that is in the ordinance and that it is coming in. Really grasping around what does that entail? And leaning into Kevin's experience, because I think he's Bryce May, that's, I'm not exactly sure, but I know Kevin was there when taking tents down and, and how that, how did that work and how effective was that? If you could talk a little bit about your experience of, what was that experience?
Well, what I, I can tell you is that it was Bryce's crew that was up there every day, several times a day. Pretty much parked and dealing with issues, underling issues in, in the mornings and the evenings with tough, tough ones. And certainly the P D can pull up the reports. I can only speak antedoubly, but I know that I was up there many times with, you know, one of your new officers who had as much experience as I did with the issue, and even a little less, and it's a difficult situation to put a police officer in if he hasn't dealt with this population before. And essentially, a lot of folks who are like, I'm not going to.
I think that's a, it's a key thing to really think about as a community and as a town. We give our best professional recommendation of what's going on around the country right now. We got to be super strategic about putting ourselves in positions where there's going to be a double force situation. And we try to limit that to, of, let's say, defense and major crime versus just smaller situations if you can.
So essentially, we have parks and our staff up in the open space dealing with that same situation right now, who are even less qualified than you are and who are dealing with, I'm sorry, but this, it really upsets me. Because it's dangerous for our employees in those circumstances. And it's dangerous for our community, it's dangerous for the people living up there. Because something is difficult and it takes staff or it takes dollars to make it happen, it's not a reason to not do it.
Could I ask, Kim, it, it sounds like what you're trying to do is buy time. You want a temporary arrangement while we work on something a little more structured. And so the question is, does that make sense? Or do you go straight to the kind of structured camp with rules for thirty people and try to address that?
I'm happy to do that next week, I would do that next week. I'm happy to do that, I don't.
And that's where I'm trying to get counsel.
I don't hear that movement.
That's where I'm looking at counsel, yes.
Thirty people is not going to act.
I'm happy to do more than that, too, I think we have the capability to do that.
So we had a discussion today, which we can't talk about. And I think we had a direction for staff from the meeting. And.
I think the.
That's the difficulty.
No, but.
That's half of the problem.
But I think the issue, I will come back with, yes, we did have that, but we have not had the discussion. What are we committed to doing? To your point to get to pick a location, are we committed to developing a managed facility somewhere? And are we committed to doing that so that the police are not patrolling people daily? That you've got your clientele that has rules, that you've got appropriate fencing and stamping? That's very different than we're going to find a temporary fix while we work on the law.
Well, even if you agree to designate a piece of property today, it's still going to take you a minimum of two months to get it ready. What are you going to do in the meantime? So you, you can't just ignore the problem either. It's, there, there will have to be some sort of interim thing, whether, whether we're handling it ourselves by designating it or whether it's just having it happening ad hoc. It will happen.
So that is my question of counsel.
There's so many variables and, and I'm not saying that. But for example, we come up, just like Melissa said, we had a discussion earlier, we come up with a plan, hopefully with the county in some sort of partnership and agreement. Is there a possibility they keep Purple Cliffs open for two weeks longer while we get it open? I'm not like, is there? They, like, I'm not saying yes or no, it's not my decision, clearly. But I just feel like jumping the gun into something that was not successful before, and I'm not saying what's gonna, what the other, like, options are, are successful, it's not, it, it just seems like a lot to just say, this is what we should do right now, when we have movement potentially in direction.
I'm trying to get a sense as the person who's working with the county and so trying to make certain I'm not acting on my own, but acting from the council. So I'm trying to get a sense of the support for or not to develop some kind of, to follow the plan, which is to develop some kind of managed facility that we, what we would do, addressing that we have now, things have changed, we now have children, you know, going, trying to go to school, living at Purple Cliffs.
One hundred percent the plan that the previous council adopted, that Athena put in, that we've been trying to slowly making headway on, I one hundred percent support, is that what you need to?
Well, I think there's a sense of it, it's one thing to support and it's another thing to say. And we need to hold ourselves accountable to reaching a viable option by a set time so that we can make this happen. It may not be by September thirtieth, but what is the, what is the plan to hold ourselves accountable? Not just us, but the county as a partnership, to having a viable option, to in particular, address those that want to live by a set of rules and ideally work toward more permanent supportive housing.
If I may, I think there's a, there's a part that we're still missing. And that's the census count.
Exactly.
Manna going through and doing the, their triage. And so right now, I, I sense there's a lot of frustration and there is. This isn't, this isn't easy. It's, and I don't mean that to be a jest, but, you know, even as we look at campgrounds, we have to look at if we were to designate it, how far are we willing to go? If somebody says, I'm not taking it down, are we willing to, right, is the council, is a policy decision, willing to say, okay, P D, go in there? And, you know, these are really tough decisions and we not, we're, we're definitely taking a look at it trying to analyze, what are the best ways that we can do it in a kind humanitarian way that gets to, that meets our purpose? But we also don't know right now how many people are there. How many people need what types of services? How many people are going to decide to, to leave? How many people are going to, to come through? That's a, a big piece of information that we really don't have of that population. What are their needs, what are they looking for? So right now, it is a little bit of a guessing game, until we get that. Some of that information, at least on the census count, we were supposed to get last week from the county. Chuck said that they didn't get it. He was expecting it sometime this week and he said as soon as he'd get it, he would give it to us. I haven't gotten an email from him, so he hasn't gotten it yet. So there is information that's coming through that begins to paint a, or puts the picture in a little bit better focus of what is it that we're dealing with? Where, how many people are we looking at being? of what is it that we're dealing with and where, how many people are we looking at being able to? How many people are saying, I'd be willing to go into a, a managed facility? Or some that say, I'm, I'm not going, I need more of a primitive managed facility. There's a lot of information there that we just, we don't have right now that they say is coming. And I do believe that it is, but I think those are some of the bits of the information that we're going to need that we can formulate a plan of, what are the, the infrastructure that we have that will fit into those needs?
Thank you for adding that, I, I guess I'm coming back to, I'm actually going back to that comment of trying to make certain that we have agreement on, what is it, finding the location and making a decision? What are we looking for? And for me, it's some kind of, it's like step A, where can people live that want to, you know, this managed facility? But for others, it could be both, it could be, we've got to do both of these at the same time. We have to do a managed facility and we have to do a managed primitive space. So I'm trying to get a sense. And I recognize, I mean, I've got to do this, we're doing this in a, in this session. And in the ideal world, we would have all the data.
I, I think any progress is good.
I'm not certain what you mean by that.
And you said two different options, both, one, anything is good, anything moving forward is good.
Looking forward to the continued negotiations. It's 5:05, just as a time check.
Yeah, no, I'm good there.
And we do have, we have given direction to staff earlier. So maybe the question is whether or not we want to have a meeting after the next city-county joint, not the B O C C, city council joint meeting, but a meeting with a council after your group meeting on Thursdays? Because I think that there will be more direction coming out of that conversation that might inform where we go. And if we wait till our next city council meeting, that's going to be two weeks away, and we will have to last two more weeks in making this happen. So I would propose that we have a city council study session, executive session, I don't know what it would be called. Either Thursday, Friday, or Monday, get it done, so we know what, so we can give further direction and move on and not, not lose another two weeks.
I'm very sensitive of losing the time between, on this issue, I, it concerns me. So I will say that I'm willing to add things to my calendar, but I recognize that other people have different schedules. But I'm happy to add something that.
Can we leave that up to the city manager? And after the Thursday meeting, when you discuss, you discuss, feel there's a need for us to get together to make some decisions? We do that, and if you think you could update a site email and have them, do that? Yeah, I just feel like those are the.
But. Annual updates are definitely a, a portion that we can definitely do. I think it's more of, you have an offer, I think, of a suggestion of executive session after the meeting. And I think that's to the council, if that's something that you as a consensus believe is needed, we can do it. That's the part where I'm looking to see if that's there.
Concern of my question is, given the Thursday meeting.
Sure.
When is our next meeting to take next steps? That, that's my question, when are we meeting again to take next steps? Because we can wait two weeks and have a study session again and have this on the calendar again to talk about taking next steps. We can wait that one, then we'll have two weeks. But my question is, what, what are we willing to commit to in order to make this happen in the timeframe that I think in the meetings we've had, we agreed that we really need to move on this?
He's, he's meeting. Staff is, we, we directed staff.
I know, but we have, they can't make decisions.
Then they'll come back to us.
When?
Well, after they've.
Work, when it works, let them do their work, they just feel like, well.
Well.
They got it, they got it. Aren't you meeting weekly?
We are meeting weekly, I think with that, it depends on what the council says. It matters to our part of it, I don't know what their response is going to be.
And they might have to go back, yeah, I don't know.
And they may say, got it, we're going to go look and we'll get back with an answer. Or, got it, we, we'd like to meet more. I don't know what that would be until I have their response to the meeting and what that meeting's going to entail.
So then we get the information to determine if we need an executive session.
You'll absolutely be.
So in the interest of losing this, ending this, so we actually have a break between the next meeting? Where we'll leave it, I, I sense that we're leaving it is, we recognize there's some urgency and that actually you need to be in, all of council needs to be involved in some of the direction with the county. That, that based on that meeting or any future meetings, if you feel there, we need to come together as a council, we will call it and we will need a quorum. So that means a commitment to keeping, moving into making the appropriate decisions that are necessary, find some options. So any disagreement with that? We're good? Okay, thank you. This is charged.